We are reconvening the regular city council meeting for the fifteenth of August. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Tomlinson?
If you'll repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicely done. Okay, so are there any announcements, Mr. City Attorney, from our closed session?
Madam Mayor, we have no reportable items this evening.
So we have no presentations or proclamations today. So we are moving on to our consent calendar. The consent calendar is all matters that are considered to be routine, and they're enacted by one roll call vote. There's no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, or the public, or the staff request that a specific item or items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action. Are there any items to be removed by staff?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'd like to pull item fourteen.
Okay, item fourteen is...
It's the Dana Point Police Services Monthly Report.
Okay, so that will be pulled, and we will do that separately. And any others from staff? How about city council? Anybody want to pull?
Madam Clerk, I'd like to note for the record to the clerk that I abstained from item number two because I wasn't at that meeting.
Thank you. And...
Madam Mayor, I will also abstain from item number two.
Any members of the public pulling any consent calendar item?
Madam Mayor, item number twelve, please.
Item number twelve. The city treasurer's report is pulled. Okay, except for those items that have been pulled for separate consideration, do I have a motion to move the consent?
Move the balance. I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Second. Any discussion? A vote? Motion carries five zero. The items that were not removed will be, have been carried. So let's, with the notation that Mr. Tomlinson and Mr. Resort were abstained from voting on item two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we deal with item twelve first, the city treasurer's report. Does this go along with the public comment? All right, so I have one public comment on item twelve, Mr. Buck Hill. If you would please come up, three minutes, please, and just state your name and where you are from. And is this Dana Point cash balances by fund? Is this your handout?
Yes, I just passed them out so you could see the numbers. I'm sorry, I don't have them for the audience. Thank you, Buck Hill, from Capistrano Beach, nineteen-year resident of Dana Point, and enthusiast of the city council.
Thank you.
We have great news. The cash balances of the city are approximately eight million dollars over the forecast that you were given when you signed off on the budget in June. So we're awash with cash, and it's good news. It says both the income of the city was greater than forecast, and the expenses were less than forecast. So this is some data for you to consider. The columns here, there's, second one over is the city's treasurer's report from last month, which told you year-to-date what was the cash balance. The third column is my estimate of, or excuse me, is the actual fund balance for six thirty. Excuse me. That's the forecast for six thirty that was given to you by staff as part of the budget package. The second-last column is the actuals. And if you can see, at the bottom line, the general fund cash is nineteen million oh ninety-nine versus a forecast that you were given seven weeks ago of fifteen million six. So we're three point four million better in cash in the general fund alone. If you look at the other funds, the way this has arrived, the top two sets of numbers are the usable funds for Dana Point, like the general fund broken into reserves and unrestricted, gasoline tax schedule M, and so on. The total of those was forecast to be twenty million nine forty-four. That's in the middle column, kind of middle of the page. The actual has come in at twenty-eight million, or seven point eight million above. Great news, we've got funds to spend. If there are not any questions on that, the next page, I've been trying to estimate, what will the, this is ca, all of those numbers I just gave you are cash. When we do our books, we have to go to accruals. So for example, there's taxes receivable for the month of June that don't come in until July or even August. When the books are closed, those get backed up. So these are not the final accrual ones, but they're very much representative of what will happen. The second page is my guess as to what the CAFR-type numbers will be. And what it says is our income, our revenue, will be up by over two million dollars. That's the middle number there, far right, what's the variance. And the costs will be down by about two million. This is outstanding news. And what I would like to ask the council to think about is page three and four of this, which is, now is the time to make a choice. Are we going to stay with the status quo and have these ungodly, inaccurate forecasts so that nobody knows what's happening? We looked at a budget, and all of a sudden, we have eight million dollars more. And you made very tough budget decisions just seven weeks ago. Or should we drop, adopt what I proposed as option one? Let's enhance our financial systems and control this so that people know, so that you can make decisions on an informed basis, and so the departments can run efficiently. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for this information. Any other public comments?
Madam Mayor, if I can, the budget approved by the city council does have dramatically different revenue and expense forecasts than the prior-year budget that Mr. Hill is referencing here. And as we come to you in September, we can highlight that for you to talk about those differences. And we can also address the material that's presented to your council tonight. Happy to do that.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow. What were you, the budget that we just approved?
For seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, has different assumptions within it for both revenue and expense than the budget that is referenced here, that we just finished on June thirtieth.
Okay, so what I understood this to be was actuals versus, this is what we actually wound up with after fiscal year seventeen, correct?
Correct.
And you're saying that our fiscal year eighteen, nineteen budget has different numbers than these, different assumptions?
Different assumptions for revenue and expense. Tighter, per the council's direction.
And this extra cash that we have, where's that going?
We'll be bringing that to you in the rollover report at the September nineteenth meeting.
Any questions? Mr. Wyatt?
Just one comment back, and we've discussed this when we were trying to do the last budget in terms of better managing to our budgets. So as you look at how that rolls forward, because there's some extra cash rolling forward, and there's also some committed monies rolling forward. And those have gone in in the past as budget adjustments. And when those first budget adjustments get made, we sort of lose track of what we budgeted for the year because they distort the budget, the look at the budget. So in earlier discussions, we had looked at a way to roll those forward in a way where they were earmarked in a special way not to camouflage our approved budgets as much. So as you work through the September, I had encouraged staff to try to keep this roll forward in so that we can still see what we budgeted for the year. And then ultimately, this cash roll forward, some of it will get spent down by finishing the projects that didn't get finished in the year. And then we'll have a delta that really is the important number. And we need to have, so we can actually identify that when it happens, and then decide what to do about it.
Absolutely. And we'll shine a bright light on it for you.
And then that gets brought to council to decide what to do with that delta, is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions, staff? Comments? Mr. Tomlinson?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I applaud Mr. Hill's hard work in putting these things together. But I sometimes wonder whether he's, are you, is he wearing the hat of Buck Hill resident, or is he wearing hat as Buck Hill member of the FRC committee? So, I mean, I just think some of these things should go through your committee, sir. I applaud you for doing the hard work and coming up with the work. But sometimes I wonder, for me, the distinction's a little bit blurred, whether you're Buck Hill resident or Buck Hill member of the FRC. And is this information the FRC has, and that should be brought through the FRC instead of directly to us? I'm just not sure.
Please.
This information is in your report, which is in your book. I'm just highlighting it because it's really surprising, as an individual and as a member of the FRC.
I just had a question about that. I was wondering, you know...
These aren't made up. It's eight million real dollars.
I know, and the news is good.
Mike has reported it, and it's right.
Thank you. And for those of you who don't know, FRC is the Financial Review Committee. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you.
Move the item.
What's that?
I'll move the item.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? Motion carries five zero. Item is moved and approved. So now we move on to item fourteen, Dana Point Police Services Monthly Report. Mr. City Manager, you pulled this?
I did. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Oh, could I interrupt you for one second?
Yes, please.
This is our new city manager. This is his first city council meeting as city manager, so I would like to welcome you. I forget, because he's been around for a while.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a new item that represents an emerging best practice for cities. What we looked at here is recently, the city of Yorba Linda, excuse me, initiated a contract service with the Orange County Sheriff's Department for police services. And they initiated a monthly report of activity in their city. And we looked at the work that they did and started to create one for the Dana Point City Council. Our plan is to report this information to your council and the community at the second meeting of every month. And so Lieutenant Chilton will be presenting to you our first report tonight, and walk you through the format as well as the numbers. And I would like to thank Lieutenant Chilton. I think Sergeant Himmel had a large role to play in this. Jill Jackson, the other staff within the Police Services Department did an outstanding job in creating the first cut at this. And we look forward to receiving input and evolving this as we move forward. So Lieutenant Chilton, would you like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Just to reiterate what City Manager said, Madam Mayor, members of the council, there's been this increasing interest in police activity. Crime stats can be very difficult as a layperson to interpret the data. Sometimes we pull data, and we read into it, and it isn't what it seems. And how does that data really pertain to you and your personal safety and the safety of your family? So I'm hoping, this is a first stab at it, and every city's unique on what they want to see. And I'm really looking forward to working with the community, working with the council, and formulating a monthly report that provides the data that will help people make informed decisions on crime. As you know, the world we live in today, with social media, there's a lot of information out there. You don't necessarily have the opportunity to vet the source. So hopefully, this will bring some balance to some discussions. And with that, Mike, you want to go to the first slide? As you know, our primary source of crime data comes from the Uniform Crime Reporting. It's been around for many decades. The format here with the Part One Crimes, we broke it down. So July of sixteen compared to July of seventeenth, and then year-to-date sixteen and seventeen, kind of give you something to compare to. It also gives the opportunity, if you see an anomaly or something jump out on you, I can speak to it and probably give you some clarification on that. Next slide. Again, Part Two, break it down into these other crimes, assaults, forgery, embezzlement, vandalism, weapons laws violations, prostitution vice sex offenses, narcotics violations. For instance, I can point out here on the narcotics violations, you see there's a big spike in the number of narcotics law violations for year-to-date seventeen. You know, one can argue that we're seeing a huge crime trend, and this is a big concern. Well, this is the deputies going out there and doing proactive policing. This is car stops, this is, you know, PED stops, and this is doing investigation work. And this is, you know, small seizures of narcotics. So it's not necessarily something from a law enforcement perspective to be concerned about. But that, you know, when I look into that number, that shows that the deputies are out there, they're working, they're contacting people and making arrests. Next slide. This is a continuation of Part Two crimes. And this is something that you see with the Unified Crime Reporting, is that it, some of the categories, like vagrancy and the loitering laws, you know, they were deemed unconstitutional by the California State Supreme Court. And, you know, people wonder why, you know, we're not issuing citations for loitering and whatnot. But we just can't do that. Again, curfew, that's simple, kids out and about, getting them back to mom and dad, issuing a citation. Again, for July, nothing really jumps out, nothing to be of any huge concern. Traffic, traffic is becoming a bigger issue in our community. There's some concerns of speeding and other various violations. As you can see here, we're still seeing that downward trend of collisions, which is very, very good. As you know, our motor officer was out injured on duty, and she's still out. And so I'm bringing motor officers in with some grant money to kind of enhance that enforcement and try to address the areas in the community that people are concerned about. So all in all, the high, you know, you see that decrease from January to May, and a lot of that has to do with Jenny being out. So, next slide. These are some of the events we participated in in July. July fireworks show, big event for Dana Point. Thousands of guests come to our town. It's a very big deal for police services to maintain public safety for a community. We had our summer concert series, and we also participated in the Fifth Marine Car Wash. Excellent. This is something CSU does prior to Independence Day. We go through the community, we do a sweep, and we arrest individuals that have warrants or other violations, people that potentially could disrupt the experience our guests are having in the community. Next slide. This was a really interesting arrest, it was a very good arrest. One of our deputies from our Community Services Unit arrested a drug dealer, and he seized eleven point nine grams of methamphetamine, twenty-four point five grams of fentanyl, or gray death, and fourteen point five grams of tar heroin, has a street value of approximately seventeen thousand dollars. What's interesting is this is the first seizure of fentanyl in South Orange County, and it really piqued the entrance of our Narcotics Bureau. When you read about the opioid epidemic across the country, when you look at a lot of these heroin overdoses, most of these overdoses are a result of the heroin laced with fentanyl. So this is huge. This is leading into a larger investigation, a very good arrest by our team. This is our Crime Prevention Specialist Jill Jackson. She rolled out her Paw Patrol program to involve dog walkers and neighborhood watch. You'll probably see an ad in the local paper here. If you're interested, your little dog gets a little bandana with the star and the sheriff dispatch number on it. So when you're out walking your dog and you see something, it just keeps in your mind that you can call him. And you also get a little dog bone pooper scooper back there. So, you know, always has, so it's twofold, water quality and crime prevention there. So I'm really hoping that that is a really successful program. We don't like to have, we always like our residents to pick up after their dogs. We presented at the Lantern Village Association meeting, and we, she hosted a quarterly meeting for all Sheriff's Department Crime Prevention Officers to discuss cybercrime and other issues. Conducted security assessment for HOA in Capo Beach. She hosted three Neighborhood Watch meetings, and participated in the Fifth Marine Car Wash. Is that the, that's the last slide. So this is kind of the beginning of something I hope that we can build on here from the community. Give them time, when you agendize something like that, it gives them the time to look at it. They can come and speak to it. Hopefully, I can answer these questions, and we can change the format and work with that. So with that, open up to any questions?
Great. I want to say thank you very much for doing this, and we really appreciate it. I think all the residents really would like this information. I think it makes them feel like we're on top of things, that you're taking care of business, and we really appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. City Manager, for working with our sheriff. I do have a couple of questions, one on curfew. Is there a program or some sort of plan to go out and try to pick up kids for curfew? The reason I ask that is about, two weeks ago, at about quarter to two in the morning, there were two kids in my driveway, because there were a couple cars parked there.
Car fishing.
And, yeah, they were surprised because there actually happened to be someone in the car. But I do have a tape of these two kids, and they were very young. I mean, these kids looked like maybe thirteen, fourteen years old, out at two in the morning. So it seems to me that our petty crime and curfew may be, maybe...
Absolutely. When you look at what is coined "car fishing," these are normally teens going down a street and checking car doors. And they're usually thirteen to seventeen years old. And so when you see those violations, these are kids we see roaming around on the street. And usually, a curfew violation goes through what's called our Pride Program. Because they're juveniles, not technically, it's a misdemeanor arrest, but it's a diversion type of program. Coupled with the fact that minimally once a month, the CSU team does a night operation and goes through every park in the city to issue for citations for, in the park after hours and whatnot. So that's really what you're seeing there. But absolutely, there is a correlation with that.
And do we pick these kids up and then take them somewhere and call their parents? What do we do?
Yeah, they definitely, we don't, we don't release kids in the field. We have to release them to a responsible adult, their parents.
And another question I get asked a lot is traffic enforcement, speeding tickets.
Right, we saw, we saw a decline there. Again, a lot had to do with Jenny being down. But our traffic car, we've seen an increase in calls for service, especially in the summer months. So that evening traffic car, when you should be out... he should be out writing citations, is now becomes an area car handling calls for service and backing up deputies in handling crashes, which leaves them little time to do traffic enforcement. So working with Mr. Senicori, he's hitting some, we, we put a list together of some hotspots in the community. Motors from surrounding cities are coming down on grant money. They get the list, they hit those areas, they report back to me and Matt, and so we get, we'll have, you should see that number begin to increase.
Great. Appreciate that.
And we will be working on replacing our motor and getting that in full spanks.
Okay, great. Well, we're glad she's doing okay.
Yeah, yeah, she'll be...
That's the important thing. And how is the new substation working out?
New substation is, is working fabulously. The transition was smooth. An interesting story, I'll cite another interesting arrest. A few weeks ago, we had a call that came out of a theft of a donation box from Ralph's up the street. Male and female in a car, Arizona plates, southbound Golden Lander. One of our deputies, starting his shift into the new station, is pulling out of City Hall when the suspect vehicle turns right in front of him, trying to duck into a neighborhood. Car stop, woman comes out, "I've been kidnapped." He goes off running, big pursuit, helicopter. Ultimately, we took both of them into custody. They're wanted in multiple states for various crimes, from robbery, assault. He's wanted in Phoenix for attempted murder.
Wow.
So great piece of police work.
Good.
I think I attribute that to our deputies going 10-8 here in the city.
Great. Well, we're glad to hear that. And we also want to thank you for your work at the Tennis, Tennis Villas?
Yes, that was a 10-hour standoff.
It was, and it ended very well, and we were very pleased.
Ended very well.
Thank you for that work.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I would just like to say thanks for the report. We've been discussing it for a time. It's good to see it come together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Mr. Chilton, what do you do with minors if you can't contact their parents when you pick them up at night?
Well, it depends on the crime. Usually...
Say, curfew. You pick them up for curfew or car fishing or...
That's a tough one. We usually have to sit on, we never really had an issue where you just can't contact a responsible adult, whether it's an aunt or an uncle, or an adult brother or sister. You know, back in the day, we used to be able to take them to Juvenile Hall, but because of some shifts in, in the system, you know, but if it's just a truant or a runaway, we would take them to Orange Wood. It's not a, it's not a correctional facility. So it all depends on, on the situation.
Do you ever have to bring them back here to City Hall? Do we have a place?
Yes.
Down in the substation where you can sit with them until their parents show up?
Absolutely. And we have, California State Department of Corrections require that we keep and maintain a log of all those detentions and whatnot, so, yeah.
Okay. One, one other question. I was reading in your report on this arrest of the, of this drug dealer. Where does a homeless male get $17,000 worth of drugs? That's amazing.
Very easy. You know, drug offenses, I mean, I mean narcotics offenses throughout the decades, I mean, it's, it's, it's always there. You see it in that strata of our community. These individuals go out there, and that's how they, they make their money. It's very common for, I mean, when it comes to seizures, that's a large seizure.
Right.
But it's really not a large seizure. I mean, when, when I talk about other seizures I've been involved in, but for a street deputy to seize that amount of narcotics is very significant. And so you'll find in the ongoing investigation, it's you always start with the street level, and that's how you build your case to get up and begin to find the supply line.
Was this person armed?
No.
No, no weapons on him?
No.
Okay. I, I just wonder, I, I looked at the number on that, I was like, well, are, are they truly homeless, or are they presenting themselves as homeless, or, you know, when you see that kind of...
Yeah, no, no, you'll be surprised with, what you'll find on some of these folks.
All right, thanks.
Do we charge the parents, or is there any charge to the parents for the police services when their, their underage children are picked up for curfew?
No. I mean, if there's any restitution, depending on the offense, it would come through the courts if it's any like vandalism or whatnot. But for our time involved in detaining the minors and, and doing that work, no, there's no charge.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Great. So, any public comments?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'll first compliment Lieutenant Chilton and his staff of deputies here in Dana Point. Great job, thank you. On that note, I will move that we receive and file this report.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion carries 5-0. The report is received and filed. Before I go on, I just want to say I have learned that the youth, the youth...
Youth Board?
Yeah, Youth Board. We're not actually going to have interviews, right?
That's correct.
Because we have someone here in the audience that may be going, huh, good. So you're welcome to come up and say anything you want, but I wanted to put you at ease that you don't have to sit here and go, huh. Okay. So moving on, at this time, are there any titles of ordinances listed on the agenda that we have to read?
Madam Mayor, have no titles or ordinance, first readings or second readings this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so this is the portion, portion of the meeting where residents can come, well, actually, anyone, any member of the public can come up and speak to us. You have three minutes, you can speak on any topic, it's not an agendized topic. We would ask that you be civil, and we will give you that same courtesy. The buzzer will let you know when your three minutes is coming to an end, so we would appreciate you just being cognizant of that time. And if you have any handouts, please give them to the city clerk, and she will distribute them to us. We have one right now. So as I read your name, please come up, and then just tell us your name and your city of residence for the record, please. So our first speaker, Mr. Tom Miller. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for letting me speak.
My pleasure.
The subject of my comment is ocean view obstructions. And I've given you all a copy of what I had to say, so I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm going to just summarize it. Basically, one day, I live on Strand Beach, Silver Road, right across from Strand Beach Park, and I see that they're doing some work in the Veterans Memorial area, and all of a sudden, I notice there's six giant holes dug in the ground, and the next day, six palm trees planted right in front of me there. When I saw what was going on, I called two different people in the Parks Department. Nobody returned my calls. I called another gentleman, and they're all, names are all on here, and I did not get a return call from him either. So I went down to the Parks Department and spoke with the gentleman there, didn't seem to know who was in charge, but said that somebody would call me. So I did get a call from someone, he came out, and we talked about it. He said that he would try to mitigate the view obstruction that they just put in front of me. I'd just like to point out that in the Strand development, at the entrance gate, there's 19 palm trees. There's a palm tree forest right there at the entranceway. On Strand Vista Park, there's 17 palm trees along the sidewalk. Now they come and put six more palm trees right in front of me. No notice, no public comment, no nothing, okay? So I think that's not very neighborly of the city to do that. And so I'm going to ask the council to, to please establish some sort of a policy for the Parks Department or any other department in the city that is going to impact somebody's view, that they need to have some sort of a comment from the public and some work something out. And I know in the past, this is not the first time this has happened, because I've dealt with the Parks Department before, and ask them to trim some of their trees they've already put there or something, and I, I get nothing. And other residents in our community have the same problem, especially along that path that goes up from Silver Road up to PCH. There's just big giant trees that are wiped out everybody's view across there. So I'm going to ask for a policy for the city Parks Department to follow when they're going to obstruct somebody's view. In addition, I'd like the council to consider a private view ordinance to be established in the city so that no one is obstructing anybody's view without any, trying to work together on their, on their view. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, and let me men, I'm sorry, you can go. Just in general, let me mention that we hear you, we're listening up here. Under the, under the laws of the state of California, the Brown Act, we are not allowed to comment on what you are saying because it's not on our agenda, but we are definitely listening, and, you know, in the future, these things that are being said to us may wind up on our agenda, and then you can come speak to us again about them. Yeah.
I'd just like to make one more comment. The additional funds that the city has, and Mr. Hill pointed out, if you would please not buy any more palm trees.
I'm with you on that one. Thank you. Next speaker, Hillary Royer.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. First of all, I want to tell you, I'm the crazy lady that comes out in her pajamas every time there's an accident on PCH. I live right there. So there, at two out of three of the last accidents, there were deaths, and I was the first on the scene. So thank you very much for looking at the speeding for Silver Road. I'm tired of coming out in my pajamas. So thank you. That being said, my background is, I'm the Landscape Chair Committee or Chairman for Niguel Beach Terrace, and I am not here on their behalf, but it does give you a perspective on what I'm about to say. I do understand all positions that you have and that you cannot say anything. My goal is to have you put something on an agenda, because I am currently also on Niguel Beach Terrace Board, and understand your position. We have been through quite a bit. There's a lot of people that want to see their ocean views. This is the same subject, and I know you've heard this before, but we need to kind of personalize this. I'm the girl in the back that wants no view but want my privacy. I really could give a rat's about about a view. However, my privacy is very important. So you know when I'm talking about this, this has to do with the community and more than one. When I'm on the Landscape Committee, I have a whole neighborhood that's willing to come here, if you put on the agenda, the, the tree for a possible consideration for a view ordinance. We have done a lot of homework, we have done a lot of communications with the city with, to no avail. We actually have pictures, reports. It's not just one or two of us, it's many of us. And our, our board, or not our board, our CCNRs does have a view ordinance. We're not asking for anything that is unreasonable. Back before the projects of the, the strands and everything, we had a mandate to spend a significant amount of money to remove trees for the view corridor from the Coastal Commission, only to have the city put them back, and in our view. So, so it's been a little inconsistent, and I think what I'm asking for is for it to be on the agenda so that possibly a consideration for fairness and consistency of what we're all doing there, remembering that we're all individuals, right? I want the back, I don't want a view. People that, that pay for their views do it so that when they're come home stressed, it's their health. It's their human right for mental and physical health to see the ocean and relax, and they paid extra money for that. So if you don't mind, my, my request isn't to sell you on an ordinance, it's to sell you on the agenda, to listen to everybody, to consider an ordinance for, for view. That's basically it, in a nutshell.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And I live nearby you, so I'm out in my pajamas in the morning, too.
Ah, there you go. Anyway, appreciate all your work.
Oh, and Mr. Miller, I did want to say to you, I'm sorry that you didn't get returned calls, and if, if it ever happens, we all have emails. Please feel free, anyone, you know, to drop us an email.
Okay, and I will add, I did not get any calls from anybody. I left messages with, however, I did email you and got immediate response. Thank you very much.
Next is Nancy Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name and city council and staff, my name is Nancy Jenkins, and I am a resident of Dana Point. But tonight, I'm speaking for the Arts and Cultural Commission, because there's been a little bit of confusion, but this Sunday is going to be a special day in Dana Point. The series of concerts in the park have officially ended, but this coming Sunday, there is the British Invasion. And the British Invasion is going to be a little different than just the ordinary concerts. It is presented by the Dana Point Arts and Cultural Commission. There are going to be music, as usual, three bands, My Generation, the first one, The Ultimate Stones, and Sergeant Pepper, all in honor of the British Invasion. Then there's going to be a British Cars on display. So what a deal, you can come to a car show and a music show. And then in addition, we have, even though we have a lot of art going on to our north, we still have about nine or 10 outstanding artists that are going to be there with their artwork on display. Now, I can't guarantee it'd be a British art, that somebody said, are you going to have British art? And I said, well, it's a little hard when most people are painting the oceans these days, but it'll be wonderful art. And then there's going to be a special truck with British food, and the British area, and the beverage area is going to be called a pub. But the coolest thing for all of you, and I'm letting the city council know, but I'm really letting anybody here know about this, because come on down, and also anybody watching on television, and park at the high school. Because if you park at the high school, there's going to be an authentic British bus, the double-decker buses, red, that are going to take you right down to the British Invasion. So I hope to see you. The first band begins at 2:00 this Sunday in Sea Terrace Park, that's Sunday, August 20th. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Sounds, sounds groovy. The sad thing is, I, I'm, I'm old enough to have actually been alive when they were saying things like that. Okay, so that is all I have for public comments. Do I have any more?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so I now close the public comment portion of the, of the meeting and move on to unfinished business. So there's a staff report, I understand, on development update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've got a brief staff report. As you recall, the council has directed that we update and modify the monthly Doheny Village Plan update to a more generic community development update, and so Ms. Luna Reynosa has got a brief presentation for you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is at the request of the city council for a monthly update of major development projects. The council also requested that long-range, also known as advanced planning efforts, be reported out as part of this agenda item. Therefore, the Doheny Village Plan update is included as part of this report instead of a separate standalone report. So moving forward, that will be the, the process implemented. Supporting document A to the staff report shows new applications for discretionary permits received by the Planning Division during the month of July. It also includes permits that were approved during the month of July as well. This information is organized by property address, as it is frequent that one property needs multiple discretionary permits, and to organize it for the community and the council, it seems... it seemed to make most sense to report it out by property address. The majority of new applications or permits approved are for single-family residences that are considering remodels, additions, or redevelopment of their existing single-family home. So, I will not provide detail on these projects as part of the monthly update, but the information is in that Supporting Document A. Instead, I will highlight significant projects. Generally, the criteria utilized to select these projects includes projects that result in new buildings, new subdivisions, or extensive renovations where the building is taken down to its studs and rebuilt. Commercial historic renovations will also be included. So, during the month of July, there was only one project that was approved that meets this criteria. It's the Wave Hotel located at 34075 Pacific Coast Highway. So, normally as part of this monthly update, I would highlight this project and show some plans and images to walk the community and the council through the details of that project, but this project is currently pending an appeal, which means it will come before the City Council in a formal appeal hearing, so I'm not going to highlight it at this time. Be inappropriate to go over those details right now. The staff report also highlights the following long-range planning efforts, the Doheny Village, sea level rise study, zoning code cleanup, historical inventory update, and the FEMA mapping update. During the time for the council to ask questions of staff, I can answer any specific questions you have on those long-range planning efforts and the staff report provides a summary of each of them. The sea level rise item is going to come up before you via a separate staff report. I'd like to now highlight our interactive development pipeline webpage, which is located on the Economic Development website. So, bear with me one moment here while I drag, sorry. I'm not seeing the mouse. I think I need a pad. It's temperamental. Okay. There. Rachel did it on her first try. Okay, so the, a microsite was created for economic development purposes. It's to target a very specific target market with a tailored message really to focus on new investors, potential new residents, and folks of that in that category. And I will let you at your leisure peruse this. You can access it by going to the city's main website and clicking on Economic Development. It'll take you to this microsite. We did showcase it to the Planning Commission. It was very well received and in fact, they suggested that it be more prominently displayed on the city's main website. But these are the different buttons and categories. I'm not going to go through them this evening. Again, please peruse the site at your leisure. There's also a location map because often people looking to invest in Dana Point are not familiar with Dana Point and where it's located. But for tonight's purposes, I really wanted to focus on the development pipeline and you go to that by going to the place to work and then there's a button here called Development And what it does is it geospatially shows the major projects going on in town and gives you a status of where they are. So, you can see this key at the top, which is the categories. So, it's potential development, meaning that the owner or applicant has come in and expressed some interest, but they haven't submitted a formal application. Under review means that they have submitted a formal application to the Planning Department. Approved means that it has received approvals from the Planning Commission and under construction means it has received building permits. So, you can, I'm just having a really hard time with this mouse. So, I don't know if we lost our.
No, just drag it out.
Okay. Where's the clicker? Here, this is, oh, there, I got it, I think. So, okay, sorry about that. So, you are able to scroll on top of these pins and it, so this one, for example, is Two Left Forks. Here is Vista Del Mar, which was commonly referred to as the Union Bank site, but the applicant has formally named it Vista Del Mar. So, you can scroll through these different pins and the scrolling bar at the bottom shows you what project it is and gives you some information and talks a little bit more about the status. So, for example, the Wave Hotel, when we go over on this pin, so you're able to see geospatially where these projects are located. You can see some information at the bottom left and on the screen up here is a better indicator of how it shows up. So, then I will show you one example of the South Cove Project. When you actually click on it, it takes you to their website. So, if the project has a website through the applicant, it will link to that website where you can get more information. So, we use pretty much the same criteria that was identified in terms of what we're going to showcase. So, these are projects that result in new buildings or subdivisions or substantial renovation of a building where it's basically being taken down to its studs and rebuilt. We're not showing all remodels, we're not showing the single-family homes, which is the large majority of the applications that are processed. So, with that, I'm available to answer any questions you might have and if there's any additional information that you would like included in this report in the future, I appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, comments? Mr. Wyatt?
Well, I would thank you and I would like to thank Rachel. I think she put in a lot of personal time and sweat building this website as part of what she loved and part of her job maybe, but mostly because she just thought it was worth doing and so I would like to make sure we thank her for it.
Yes, thank you and I'm sure we'll find many other projects for you. Anything else? Any public comments on this?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, do I then have a motion to file and receive the report?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Motion carries five zero, so the report is received and filed. So, now we're on to new business. Any staff report, questions from council, public comments on item 18, the Dana Point Youth Board appointments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Speaking of Rachel Johnson, she has a staff report for you. She serves as our staff liaison to the Dana Point Youth Board. Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Before you tonight, you have the recommendations for appointments to the Dana Point Youth Board. In July of 2003, the City Council adopted a resolution to establish the youth board to stimulate community involvement within the high school youth. Those appointed must be residents of Dana Point and of high school age. There is a two-term limit of, which is, their term is one year. However, for those who have reached their term limit but still desire to be involved are able to return as non-voting members-at-large and they help serve as mentors to the youth board. In 2016, 2017, the youth board volunteered for the Turkey Trot, Winter Festival, egg hunts, the Dana Point Grand Prix, the Festival of Whales, movies in the park, and they ran the Holiday Home Decorating Contest. They also adopted a family of seven and provided Christmas for them, as well as donated money that they fundraised to the Hobie Memorial Foundation and Angels at Risk. They also were able to listen to presentations from different departments throughout the city, including community development, where they were able to learn how a project goes from an idea to review to planning commission and then on to building. Also, how our emergency preparedness department works. They got a presentation from the City Clerk's Office on the Brown Act. So, these presentations all helped them learn more about how cities run and become more involved. The 13 students before you come from six different high schools and have all expressed a passion for making a change in the community and being involved. It also has a recommendation to appoint four members-at-large for those who have termed out. So, that's my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great, thank you. And I just want to say I'm very, very proud of all of the youth who've expressed this interest and who want to get involved and engaged and it's so important and thank you very much. We really appreciate that. Okay, so, Mr. City Manager, what is our next step here?
We'd like you to consider a motion to appoint the youth board members that are before you this evening.
Do we read out their names?
You can do that if you like.
Okay. And if any of you are here, please feel free to acknowledge.
Put a camera on.
Get used to it. Okay. Nick Newkirk?
Put a camera on.
Thank you, thank you. Gabriel Anderson. Tristan Castano. Ashley Guzman. Lance, oh boy, help me here.
Refugee.
Sorry?
Refugee.
Thank you. What she said. Josu Santana. John Donello. Omar Garcia. Daniel Powers. Matthew Rosenthal. Aidan Castano. Connor Castano. And Derek Chin. So, do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote? Oh. Go ahead, Mr. Wyatt.
Well, it was the first time you gave me a chance to discuss, so.
Sorry, was I too quick?
You were too quick.
I've been told that.
Yeah. So, I was at a League of Cities Conference recently and there was a talk about, sort of dealt with, you know, the election, previous election overview at the national level and some of the various controversies that followed. And in the follow-up, the speaker said that one key missing element now in our education system was a course in civics that it now gets combined in with a number of other topics and it's not stressed at all and that understanding how governments work and really a full-fledged course in civics would have a huge positive impact on how elections are done, how governments looked at and how to interact with them. We don't have that, but maybe this is the best thing we can do to help move that along and get people involved and get the understanding. So, thank you for volunteering to participate in the board and thank you for, you know, putting it together and running it. I think it's a huge benefit and we should do all we can to encourage the participation and get people involved, so just thank you on it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I will go more slowly. Okay, congratulations, motion carries. The 13 of you are now the.
Now we're in, now we're taking it out.
I know.
And party.
Thank you very much again and all of you, all 13 of you, we really appreciate it and it's good to see younger people getting involved in government. Government is important, it serves a purpose, your local government is here to serve you, so we really appreciate you getting involved. Okay, then there are members-at-large, those who have been termed out but still want to serve, and there are four of those. Colin Powers. David Santana. Maite Garcia. Maite Garcia. And Samantha Chen. So, thank you, thank you all. We appreciate that you've done this for a couple of years and you still want to be here. So, do we have a motion to accept them?
I move we accept members-at-large.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Any discussion?
No, yes, I'm good.
Motion carries five zero. Again, congratulations to all 17 of you and thank you. We look forward to working with you. You can breathe now. Okay, item, we'll move on now to item 19. The report of the citywide parking and parking supply and management options for Dana Point. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Senior Planner Belinda Dynes will be introducing Dr. Wilson to make his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Good evening, Mayor Lewis, members of the City Council and members of the public. My name is Belinda Dynes, Senior Planner for the Citywide Parking Community Outreach Efforts. For those of you in the public who may not be aware, in March of 2017, the City Council directed staff to engage in public outreach efforts on parking issues. The city staff initiated a contract with Dr. Richard Wilson, an urban planning professor at Cal Poly Pomona, to facilitate the parking workshop and prepare a summary of a report on parking issues specific to Dana Point. In April, preliminary briefings took place with the City Council, Planning Commission, and City Staff to discuss concerns related to supply and parking management. From April to May, the city encouraged the public to participate in an online community survey in order for elected officials and stakeholders to gain an understanding of current parking issues and opportunities from the community's perspective. On May 15th, the Joint City Council Planning Commission Study Session was held as a citywide parking workshop with over 100 people in attendance. The community was encouraged to participate in interactive roundtable settings to voice their ideas. Members of the public have commended the outreach efforts with positive feedback. Then, on June 26th, the Planning Commission had the opportunity to receive public comment and review Dr. Wilson's report and findings. The Planning Commission was supportive of the report and made a motion to recommend approval by the City Council of the report and its proposed action items. I'm pleased to introduce to you Dr. Richard Wilson, our parking consultant, who will provide us with a presentation of his report and recommendations. Thank you, Dr. Wilson.
Good evening, Dr. Wilson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be back here in Dana Point and I have a short 10-minute overview of my report, which I'll share with you now. Belinda mentioned many of the activities that occurred, including the stakeholder survey and public workshop. I think you've done, your staff has done an excellent job of organizing those events and you have a wealth of information that can serve you for years to come in terms of stakeholder perceptions of parking issues. My perspective was to find points of agreement. I listened in the public workshop, I read the reports, I met with people and so my emphasis tonight is some steps Dana Point can take to move forward with parking issues. A number of broad conclusions came from my analysis. First of all, there's a number of strong points about what you're doing now. The program to lease private parking for public uses in the Lantern District is innovative and a great idea. You have a shuttle system that you can use in different ways if you want to try and create remote parking schemes. You have a very high-quality physical environment, quality of sidewalks, street trees and pavement and so on, and there's potential still for more sharing of parking between different uses. In terms of issues for considerations, consideration, I heard frustration on the part of shoppers, residents and businesses about the parking situation. In the Lantern District, the on-street parking is not actively managed in terms of time limits or pricing. And you have a development history in the Lantern Village that has resulted in relatively small parcel sizes and no public off-street parking facilities. And finally, your parking requirements are typical of those that were developed when the priority was serving automobiles and don't reflect some current thinking about a multimodal transportation system that emphasizes walking, cycling, transit and shuttles. So-- So, you could easily spend a year developing a vision for parking for the city of Dana Point. I have just jumped ahead and proposed one here. I'll read it to you. "A parking infrastructure that serves the broader Dana Point community vision by getting people to where they need to be with a high level of customer service, transportation options, parking choices, safety, financial feasibility, and environmental sustainability." So this sets out a vision that you could consider in terms of how you will look at ideas for improving parking in Dana Point. How well will strategies proposed meet that vision? I'm also proposing three principles. Create order and reduce anxiety by getting the right user to the right parking space. What I mean by that is it's undesirable to have an employee of a store park in front of the store in the prime spot all day long, so allocating the different users to the best parking spaces is a good strategy. Principle two is use resources efficiently. That refers both to the parking, to make sure that you don't have empty spaces when people are having trouble finding parking, but also using the city's financial resources efficiently in terms of finding cost-effective ways to get people where they need to go. And principle three is to encourage alternative transportation and Park Once concepts. By Park Once, I mean a scheme where people might park once and then walk to other destinations in a downtown area. I am proposing that you form a parking oversight committee or some equivalent to manage this process of moving forward with parking management in Dana Point. Now, I know if the view is that there's one single magic solution to parking problems, this is an unsatisfying recommendation. But in fact, my observation of best practice is it does take the people, human effort, the committee effort, to coordinate within the city and between the city and the Chamber of Commerce and other stakeholders in Dana Point. So, the purpose here would be to provide almost an equivalent to the reporting you heard before on crime in terms of a regular annual report on parking occupancy, parking management measures that have been used, their level of success, and annual consideration of adjustments to the parking management scheme. At the workshop, I heard interest from the Chamber of Commerce about participating in such a committee, and so I've outlined five possible members of the committee, but I think staff and council will want to consider how ultimately you might want to structure that, should you take this recommendation. Next, the next slide is, I'm not going to read. This is sort of the toolbox of measures that I identified based on looking at best practice and looking at your local situation. Seventeen measures, and so the idea is in Doheny Village, in Lantern District, in residential neighborhoods, you would draw from a list like this to begin implementing parking management. Next slide, please. I've outlined a two-year agenda for you to consider. In year one, citywide, I think would be adopting a set of principles and creating this committee, and begin to look at the opportunity for remote parking shuttles. That would be shuttles for remote parking for special events, for employee parking, and the like. In the Lantern District, and I will note that Planning Commission said they believe this should be the first priority in terms of moving forward. You may consider on-street time limits in areas that are the most busy and have the highest parking occupancy. Strategies to protect residential streets from parking overspill. Marketing schemes to help make residents more aware of parking opportunities, and consider additional leasing for public parking where that's appropriate. In Doheny Village, you are moving along, suggesting to monitor the adoption of the Form-based code. I looked at the parking standards recommended in that code, and I agree with them. I think in many ways, it's a different situation than the Lantern District, and it's being sort of built from scratch, which allows one to build in a lot of good parking management strategies. In residential neighborhoods, residents put marks on maps. There's a lot of specific information about the exact location and concern that residents have in their neighborhood. So I think in that first year, a period of following up, getting a staff team together to look at priority areas, whether they be parking enforcement, speeding in neighborhoods, residential permit programs, and the like, would be a good idea. In year two, citywide, I would suggest you consider a pilot program in remote parking and maybe issue your first annual state of parking report in Dana Point. In the Lantern District, I think by year two, it will be time for a district-wide occupancy study. You have some new projects under construction. You're going to want to understand how that affects the parking demand pattern. I think you may want to look at seeing where parking meters may be appropriate, and do a financial analysis to compare how much you're spending on leasing public parking with the option of creating an off-street public parking facility. In Doheny Village, depending on the pacing of that development, I would suggest beginning to implement parking management measures as the development occurs, and ensuring that those measures are built into development approvals. And in residential neighborhoods, consider the additional use of residential permit programs. So that's a quick overview of my suggestions, and I would be pleased to answer any questions and hear your suggestions.
Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Wilson? Mr. Wyatt? Thank you. It's okay.
Did the public comments go first, or?
Well, no, you asked your questions first.
Sorry, just wanted to be sure when you brought them up.
Thank you.
Well, I, thank you, and your report and the work done give us more information to work with. I, I'm not yet sold that we're ready to start implementing all of the things, so, and I'm not sure that a parking oversight committee, which would meet, you know, and essentially a public meeting periodically, can give enough attention to this to help us get from where the recommendations are and reality into a working parking structure. I wanted to look at the idea of putting together a task force, you know, maybe the mix of people you have is correct, or maybe slightly different. But I actually think that we need to look at chartering a task force to develop a very specific plan and monitor how, and then out of that, through the council, push some of the workload back to staff, because it will require a fair amount of work beyond what an oversight committee could do. So I don't know if you find that that is compatible with what you were thinking, or any comments on that, Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, I didn't say in the presentation, but normally, if you appointed such a committee, there would also be a parallel staff technical committee that would meet within the city family to coordinate between departments and move strategies forward. So whether you call it a task force or a technical committee, it's definitely, there is a lot of outreach, technical analysis required to begin to implement and monitor the success of these measures. So I think you're right, it's a lot, and so forming a group like a task force seems like an appropriate interpretation of what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I don't want to wordsmith it right, because we're trying to work through, but I do think, and in fact, I, as we'll find out later in the agenda here, I've been working on trying, you know, working with the city to put together a task force for another purpose. The idea being that that task force ultimately will make a recommendation back that the council, you know, hopefully can adopt or work through it in terms of how to get there from here, and then dissolve, because then you start to look at the oversight organization as a second step beyond that to periodically review the goals set forth by that task force. So I think a similar approach would be effective. There's a lot of stuff to dig through on parking, and a lot of questions to be asked, and as you know, we have a coastal overlay zone, which limits some of the parts we can do, and without care will imbalance how you restrict certain things, because you can have different restrictions in some sections of the city and others, so we can't piecemeal it. Piecemealing it will cause, you know, even more issues, in my view. So I think we, I think your list of recommendations is good material for a task force to take and start to lay out how you would actually implement that, and what the hurdles are going to be, and what, so forth. But anyway, my recommendation isn't opposed to the overall idea. I think the technique for making it happen, we may want to think through a little more clearly here, I guess.
Thank you. I also, I also was troubled by the fact that one area gets priority over another. I'd like to see a task force, and I'd like, you know, once again, we're looking at Lantern Village over Doheny, and I'd like to see this task force looking at parking and where we should put a priority based not on a location, but what are the issues there? So I would hope a task force would look citywide as opposed to place by place.
Coming back, Dr. Wilson, to sort of look at, you alluded to part of this. I actually think that before we go very far, I mean, we can deal with some specific issues that maybe without piecemealing it up too bad, as we look at it. But I find that parking, connectivity, and circulation are all the same problem. That is, moving people around from where they are to where they need to be. My bigger concern here, as we look at the specifics of our city, generally, the people who live here and work, work out of the city, because we're not a job center for most of the residents here, so they drive, because getting to and from their places of employment in Santa Ana, Irvine, or various other places, that's the only real practical solution we have for the foreseeable future. And so to the opposite side of the coin, much of our workforce doesn't live here, because the affordable housing options for much of our workforce are low, so we get a lot of drive into the city. And I don't think, again, we're going to see that change quickly. However, once in the city, once, you know, then your ability to be home and move around the city without having to get in your car to drive to Doheny Village, or the town center, or to the harbor, to the beach, our resorts to be able to move people, our employers to be able to move their employees from, you know, a remote parking to where they have to be instead of putting them in residential areas. I mean, I think there's a whole set of that. The Doheny Village plan, I mean, the one piece of feedback that we got that was most consistent, it's an island, it doesn't connect well with the rest of the city, because it's surrounded by a creek and freeways. And so pedestrian, easy, foot traffic is very close to a lot of things, but it's not easy to get there. So as we look at connecting them, and how all of these, how we move people quickly and easily between points. So I think that you mentioned, you know, sort of remote shuttles and remote parking. I think we need to tie the whole connectivity. How do we connect people in Doheny Village to the beach, and to the harbor, and to the town center, for example, or from the town center to the harbor, or, you know, or to the beach, and so forth, is a part of the plan. I think it's part of the, quote, I'll call it, "part of the parking plan." I don't think it gets, I don't think you can isolate it as we do this. Any thoughts on how, you know, consistent that is with your ideas, or am I way off base?
No.
Which, surprising at that.
You're right on base, because really what you're talking about is looking at the different markets for parking. There's a market for people who are commuting into the city to park at a workplace, there's a market for visitors, there's a market for residents. So yes, connecting parking demand to travel is essential, and then, of course, thinking about which of these markets is the easiest to get a mode switch, like getting someone to park once is probably an easier sell than changing the travel behavior of someone who commutes into the city. On the question of piecemeal versus comprehensive, I'm in favor of a data-driven approach, so what the data tells us should tell us where the emphasis should be. So when I think of getting started, though, what I heard is lots of frustration at the workshop from the community. So, a couple of things that wouldn't impede a comprehensive approach, such as addressing some specific problems in neighborhoods, making residents better aware of where all the public parking is. You know, there's some things you could start to do to make people feel like there's progress here, because if you move on to the more advanced parking management, start talking about pricing, and everyone's still mad about the thing in their neighborhood, you know, you can build some momentum towards the bigger things by getting started.
Any other comments? Mr. Miller?
What?
Oh, sorry?
If you're not done, go ahead.
I have one more.
Okay.
One more piece of the puzzle, I'm trying to piece together. So your proposal, there are parts of your proposal, or your report at least, that I'm not very fond of, but that's not, that's the normal way things work. I don't think that reducing residential parking is helpful to us. I think we actually are finding that it's going up and will, as forecasted, continue to go up, because the cost of housing is high. So children, adult children are living at home longer, people who, you know, are renting places are getting more roommates and have more cars. So the need for the parking isn't going down. If we don't supply it, then those extra cars end up in the general street parking and take away from businesses and others, so we have to really look hard before we make that move. The trend that I do think we can leverage and look at how it all fits together is, you know, is basically that will come in timeframes that are meaningful to us, autonomous vehicles and other things that can shuttle people around much more economically, and therefore can reduce the need to drive locally between point A and point B. With that, I'm a little concerned about, you know, restricted hours, that is pushing turnover in higher priority areas, because it means moving cars more. So I'm a little bit of quandary on how, putting hour-restricted parking, and yet having shared public parking, so you can park once and walk, work together, those seem to be conflicting to me. And then reducing residential parking, which means you're going to take up more street parking for residences, some of these look to me like they create conflicts as opposed to strategy. So I'd like your thoughts on those.
Okay, I think on the issue of the faster turnover, the idea would be if you've got some uses where people take short trips, and they're in the coffee shop for fifteen minutes and then they leave, it's very efficient if the spaces nearby that use have a shorter time limit. So the spaces turnover, so one parking space, there's fifteen people in a day instead of just one. What you want, when I said the principle of get the right parker to the right spot, so you'd want the park-onces spaces to be very convenient, but probably not the prime spot, and if you're differentiating with price, you could make those free, and you're charging for on-street parking, which causes those to turn over faster. So that's one way of dealing with that. In the, with the issue of residential parking, I've been to so many communities in Southern California where occupancies in residential neighborhoods are going up, and there's parking issues in the neighborhood. So I acknowledge that reality. I do make a distinction between in existing neighborhoods and a new development like Doheny Village. In other words, if you're doing a new development from scratch, residents are aware of how much parking is available, they are weighing their options for an apartment there... They are weighing their options for an apartment there, a condo there versus another location with more parking. And the idea is that we should offer some choice so people, you mentioned the expensive housing, while high parking requirements make parking housing expensive as well. So I think in a newly developed area where you've got proper parking management, that's where providing housing options with less parking is a good thing to do. In the existing neighborhoods, I acknowledge that there's a lot of pressure on that parking and that's where you use residential permit districts or other measures to try and deal with that. But I make that distinction between those two types of areas.
I guess I would buy that if I believe that when you signed the lease, you agreed not to own a car. But the fact is that generally, if it reduces the price, people will take the better price because the housing's so expensive and then figure out what to do with the car later. So it just becomes, you know, an additional issue for them. But I don't, I'm not yet convinced that they just won't have one because it's inconvenient. They will just figure out how to deal with it.
Mr. Miller, did you have comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, there's a lot of conversation going on here tonight about current parking problems. And I truly believe as council members, we need to take a look at this problem, not in today's terms, but in 10 years from now, 15 years from now. What's parking going to look like then? But at the same time, keeping in mind, in the next three to five years, we have to address today's problem. And so, you know, we haven't really had the conversation about the autonomous cars, self-driving cars, are we going to need a lot of parking for that? You know, I disagree with you a little bit on this younger generation only because I have nephews that are millennials and my brother just had to force my nephew to take driver's ed. He didn't want it. He uses Uber. That's all he wanted to do. He said, "It's easy, Dad. I pick up my phone and the guy picks me up and takes me where I want to go." And I think you're starting to see this technology take an even stronger route, not only with the millennials, but with people of my generation, the older generation, they're starting to realize, why would I drive my car, one for five bucks? I can get in a car that'll pick me up and drop me off wherever I want to go. And I think that needs to be a large part of this discussion. The other issue is, I understand the holistic view of parking, but we have to be realistic. In Dana Point, Doheny Village is not ready yet. The zoning isn't ready. We don't know what parking's going to look like down there. We don't know what the zoning's going to look like down there yet. But we do know in Lantern District what it's going to look like because it exists today. That's an opportunity right now that we can actually use that possibly as our test bed. How does this work? You know, does a reduced parking requirement work? Can we change it later? How do we address these issues instead of saying, "Well, and you want to talk about the harbor as well, that's not even city property." So, I mean, who knows what's going to happen down there? I think, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the opportunity to take a holistic view of this because Doheny Village could be five, six years out. And we're sitting and looking at an area of town right now that has a parking issue and we need to address it now and not wait five or six years as these other areas are trying to develop. You know, I just truly think that if we don't take the long-term view of this, we'll be doing the city a huge disservice, a huge disservice. Because we may not need these parking lots or parking spaces in 10 or 15 years because technology is changing. People are going to travel differently. The autonomous car is here today. It's just legislation that's preventing it from being on the road. So, you know, this is not some futuristic Jetsons issue any longer. It's happening today and we need to take that into consideration when we start talking about these parking issues. So, you know, before we go down this path and say, "Okay, how are we going to move people around?" And that's a very valid thing. We need to figure out how we're going to do that. But how we do it today is going to be very different from how we do it in 10 years. And we need to address that. Off-site parking, you know, are we going to have city parking structures? Are we not going to have them? Will we need them in 10 years? I don't know. But creating, I don't know if a task force is the right thing. I don't really know how we would create that and the logistics around it. Maybe we do ad-hocs, I don't know. We have traffic improvement subcommittees, we have planning commissioners, maybe that's how we do that. I mean, they're already here. Why would we create yet another committee? But I just think we have to take a look forward on how do we address parking and not look at just today. Let's give a solution today that in 10, five, 10 years is not going to be valid. And that's, I think we need to make sure we take a look at that. And I don't know how you feel about that, but I think that's what's going on in other communities. You're seeing a lot of communities looking out, not in the present or even back.
Yeah, I would, on the autonomous vehicles and shared ride services, I'm tracking it all the time and still, I'm quite uncertain about how these trends are going to unfold and how fast. And I do think they'll unfold differently in different communities for different travel markets. So, one, you're raising a very important question about how much parking will we need in the future? And I think it's reasonable to say less, but then by when? And so the great advantage of parking management is you can change it. You can alter prices, you can alter use rules, you can alter shuttles. Those things are very flexible, so you can adapt as this technological change happens. The other issue is thinking about parking facilities and will we need them in the future? Different approaches have different levels of flexibility. Building underground parking is the least flexible. You really can't use it for anything else but storage if you don't need it. If you build a structure with level floors and clearances, you can actually repurpose it to another use. And if you have a surface remote lot that you're using that you can adjust its size and someday you may not use it, there's not a lot of capital caught up in that facility. So I really think the prime takeaway for me is with the uncertainty is we want to do parking strategies that are flexible and can respond to these changes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Wyatt?
I, you know, I agree with you, Mr. Miller, that we have to look at the future, right? I mean, we're going to deal with the short term, right? We have to, right? We can't just ignore it. I'm not sure the, you know, the trends coming out from, you know, Highway Patrol and DOT still says that cars per residence is going to go up through 2050. That's far enough out for me to believe that I'm not going to see fewer cars. And we're sort of in that car. So I do think we'll have autonomous cars and people will get driven to work by their autonomous cars. I think where we do have the opportunity is, once you put it in the garage, not to have to take it out until you go to work again or go somewhere more distant. So providing local things and then looking as we flush out the city's development to make sure that we also have within it the places that they need to go on a routine basis so that we've looked at, you know, what we force them to drive out of the city because they can't get here. And so we can reduce that need. So, yeah, looking at, dealing with five years is necessary. Looking at 15 to 20 years is also necessary. We just have to, that's why I said we still have some work to do to guess what that'll look like here and what our appetite is short-term and what, you know, what's possible. The idea is of staying flexible and not building things that can't be reused, I think, is very valid. I think that we will ultimately end up repurposing facilities, but not soon enough, I guess.
All we have, oh, did anybody else have comment? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Appreciate your work. We'd like to give two residents a chance to speak to this issue. First, Ms. Teresa Bovee, and then Cindy Fleming.
Hi. Evening. How are you? And my name is Teresa Bovee and I'm a resident in Dana Point. I read through the parking study and my understanding was that his recommendation was that we go forward with the form-based code zoning for the parking. And I disagree with that because, like, one of the things they have on there is there's no commercial vehicles over one and a half tons where you have businesses that would require that. I understand it's in the small footprint and the large footprint area, but still, you have landscapers and others over there who need that. And so my other concern is that what I'm hearing tonight is new development, the planned development, the new development. My understanding is right now, after a meeting with many of those property owners down there, there's nothing for sale down there. We're not planning to redevelop right now. And so the parking is fine now, but I do think that if you change the parking that requires much less parking space for new development, that new development will want to come, that will be an incentive for them to do that. Because from what I've read on the parking report, on the zone-based coding, is that it's like, you know, one per, one-bedroom apartment. Well, you're going to allow four-and-a-half-story buildings to go up there for residents. And I'm like, where are they going to park? There's no public parking down there unless you want to consider, like, we're, you know, smart and finalist, but I don't think they're going to be allowed to park there. Maybe you can lease it off spaces, was one of the suggestions. I just don't think that's realistic and I don't want to see us approve that in any part for right now on that coding. So I don't want to approve the parking on that. One other concern that I have and I have to talk about is the expensive legal fees we're incurring. And I know you guys had that during the closed session, but I just want to express my concern as a resident that you guys are spending so much money on lawsuits against the city. And I think that should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys, everybody who comes down here and stands up and talks to us and shares their opinions with us. We really appreciate you taking time out of your evening to do that. Ms. Fleming?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. First of all, thank you for initiating this parking workshop and the survey and report that was done. I do want to say, when we're talking about the future, there are unassailable experts in all of our transportation agencies and they are all unanimous in saying that over the next 25 years, which is what we are talking about when we talk about advanced planning, cars, the volume of vehicles will increase with the population. Right this moment, according to Caltrans' report for last year, there are enough vehicles registered with the DMV in Orange County for approximately 85% of the population to have a car. If you think about it, 85% of the population doesn't have a driver's license. That includes infants and extreme elderly. Talking about reducing parking right this moment when we're bringing in more residential development doesn't make sense, period. Businesses need parking. The parking must be provided within the parking districts. I sincerely hope that you will direct staff to begin work on implementing the policies that will provide the real parking, public facilities within the business districts to provide adequate parking to support our businesses. This is the only way that we're going to see these areas develop the way we know that they can. I also urge you to direct staff to implement the no-business parking from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM signs on all residential streets impacted by the Lantern Business District within the next 30 days. There's really no reason to delay since these restrictions are for the same hours as those for the Bluff Top Parks that have already been approved by Coastal Commission. I also urge you to direct that a program for resident and resident guest vehicle identification be implemented as soon as possible, but that in the meantime, reports by residents of employee vehicles in residential areas be addressed. No more than one warning per license number. This has been an ongoing problem for a very long time and we all know about it. Again, I thank you for taking action on the parking workshop and I urge you to please approve the citywide parking report before you and direct staff to begin implementation of its suggestions. Thank you.
Okay, so the first recommendation is that the city council receive and file the citywide parking report. Do I have a motion on that?
For staff. Ms. Fleming brought up a really interesting point about the 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM no parking, no commercial parking or restaurant parking. And we addressed this with Coastal once before, right? But the thing she brought up that was really interesting to me is we already have those hours on the gazebo's and things. Would we have a problem with that with Coastal?
I'm going to need to research whether we processed a coastal development permit for those hours. I'm not sure. Those were posted, I believe, prior to my time here. I'm going to have to go research that.
Okay, because I do recall when we were trying to do the parking plan once before, they required a parking benefit district over there, which is still on the table, by the way. I mean, the community wants it. My only concern is if we go down the path and post without, you know, consulting Coastal, we could end up in another situation where it's going to increase our legal fees as we defend it. So could you check on that, please?
I have a...
Mr. Wyatt?
Just one piece of data on that. We looked at it before because the overlooks, you know, are posted as parks and they all have hours. I mean, basically, at the end of Amber Leonard and at the, you know, and the Bluff Trail or whatever it's called between, you know, Old Golden and Violet Leonard have hours, those same hours on them. So coast access itself and Heritage Park has those hours. So all the places, all the ways that you could get from, for example, that area to the coast are all closed at 10:00 PM and open at 6:00. So you really aren't limiting access. That doesn't mean that the Coastal Commission won't take issue, but we have a fairly interesting rationalization for being able to do that.
Mr. Miller?
I understand that, but our experience with what happened over at Strands tells a very different story of what they may consider coastal access and what they may not consider. My only concern is, let's just get an answer before we try to go down that path. I mean, I'm okay with this, but because we do need to protect those residential neighborhoods, I just don't want to get us in a situation that Coastal could come back and fine us or do whatever that they want to do to us, quite frankly, if we just go ahead and start posting on all these residential streets, "You can't park here after 10:00 PM," after they already told us very definitively, "You can't limit coastal access like that." So...
Do you have other comments? All right, so do I have a motion to receive and file the citywide parking report?
Madam Mayor, I'll move to receive and file the report.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, so the report is received and filed. Now, the second issue is to direct staff to return at a future city council meeting with a resolution to establish the Parking Oversight Committee. Do I have a motion to do that?
First of all, I have some questions, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
You know, some of the areas we talked about, like Santa Clara, maybe this question's directed to Ursula. What to date have we done over there? We've done some things over there on those parking areas that are affected by the businesses there. What have we done to date in those residential areas? Maybe you can give me a brief synopsis to jog my memory of what's happened over there?
Well, the city has adopted the necessary ordinance to be able to charge for parking. That's one of the first steps. And that went in conjunction with the parking management plan that was previously proposed to the city council. And that was not part of the zoning code and so that is in effect. And that was to enable a parking benefit district to be established in that area. There has not been an implementation of the parking benefit district in that area to date. We do meet quarterly with Coastal staff to talk about a variety of issues and they reiterated what they've told us multiple times, that they do not support preferential parking districts in the coastal zone. They were pretty adamant about that. And so that is... And so that is why the parking benefit district was the tool that was being considered for that area.
Okay, thank you.
When was that, you said there's an ordinance or something already approved to have pay parking?
Correct. A city cannot charge for parking without having this ordinance adopted, and that went in conjunction with the Parking Management Plan that went to the city council. It was adopted.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, Ms. Luna Reyno, so, you know, we, we've talked about parking benefit districts and preferred parking districts. Would, and this is my question, this is kind of what I was getting back to. Even though we're going to limit parking from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, would they consider, because we're going to have to give a sticker or something for that, so we know who the residents are that are parking there, would that be considered preferred parking district since we're not charging for it?
Yeah, I don't know. No, I don't think technically it would be considered a preferred parking district because that's when you issue stickers to residents to allow them to park. I think that...
But won't we have to do that if we limit parking from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM? We're going to have to recognize the resident car somehow.
Well, I, I wasn't sure if that was just a prohibition for all vehicles during those times, or if it was to allow residents to park there. If it was, then yes, that's a preferential parking district. I wasn't sure of that, that piece of it. I wasn't sure what, if you were just talking about the overlook areas or, you know, what But yes, if it was to issue stickers to residents, that would be a preferential parking district.
Mr. Wyatt?
I think they, part of that question, though, coming back is absolutely, it's a preferential parking district from my definition. The question is whether you can have preferential parking when essentially there's no coastal access impact from it during those time hours. In other words, you can't actually get to the coast. It's, it's a little bit like what they eventually permitted at the Strand where they said at 10:00 PM till 6:00 AM you can put a rope up because there's no access. So it, it, so the blanket of no, the blanket of no preferential parking may be a little broader than what their, their need is. Certainly, if we tried to do that, when it was limiting coastal access, they would raise the flag and say, "No, we've asked you not to do, we've instructed you, you shouldn't do that," I guess maybe is a better way. But I'm not sure at night. That's why it's worth pursuing.
Well, I, I absolutely agree. We need to ask the question. But I, I've just, I think we've gone down the path with them, and if we're going to issue stickers. I'm, I'm assuming the residents want to park on the street after 10:00 PM?
They need to.
Okay. So, you know, we, we need to make sure we clarify this before we go down this path because, you know, by doing this, you are technically creating a preferred parking district in the coastal zone, and they may take a position, just we're not going to set that precedence anywhere on the coast, and they may tell us no. But we need to pursue it. Okay? Thanks.
Mr. Tomlinson?
You know, there's a variety of issues here that, I mean, I don't know if we can address all these things tonight. I just don't see, you know, we've got a lot of issues on the table. Maybe I suggest that we have staff come back to us some key ideas, and, and then we kind of mull over them each at a time. I, I'm just not sure, from what I'm hearing from the community tonight, what I'm hearing from council members tonight, whether there's clarity to move forward with some of the ideas, and maybe we can go let staff grapple with that and bring that back to us.
Well, yes, and I think that's why staff's recommend, second recommended action is to direct them to return with a resolution to establish a Parking Oversight Committee. So that was, that was the motion I was seeking, or whatever we were going to call it. Do I have a motion to do that?
Well, I guess, but my question before we, we get there, what are we really sending them out to? Are we, are we talking about what was, what was presented in this?
Yes.
In terms of the, the membership on it? Or are we just saying, "Go out and do this?"
Well...
Or create this? Or could, is this something we need to talk about as, as a council on who's going to be on this? You know, who, who's going to represent the, I don't know. I mean, I guess I'm confused on what this committee's going to be, who's, who it's going to be comprised of. Is it, now, the next question, it gives me a hard time about this, but is this going to be a Brown acted committee where we're going to have, have legal and staff? And how do we, is that what we're talking about? Or could we do this with an ad hoc somehow?
Madam Mayor?
Say, I think that's what we're directing the, the staff to do, is come back to us with their proposal, correct?
Absolutely. And to, in response to your question directly, any entity created by the council is by definition a Brown Act body. That being said, as you mentioned earlier, this is my first meeting. I've not had the opportunity to work in great detail with Ms. Luna Reyno and her staff on this specific issue. We've taken a lot of input from the council and from the community tonight. We would ask that you direct us to come back, whether it's with a resolution, creating a new committee or something else. We will be taking a look at that. Certainly, the ideas of task forces and work plans come to mind, and so our preference would be if you do direct a motion tonight, that it would be somewhat broad-based so that it would give us an opportunity to take in all this input, bring it back to the council, maybe in a study session to explore these issues a little more fully, and then move forward from there.
And is that something you could bring back to us by the September 19th meeting?
We certainly could, although given the issues on the September 19th meeting, we'd probably ask for your forgiveness to let us push that to October. We think you'll have a, likely a busy meeting on September 19th, and you may need some time, as you've taken tonight, to work through some of these issues.
Okay, so the first Tuesday in October?
Certainly.
Okay, so, so staff is basically asking us to direct them to return to us at the October 1st Tuesday meeting with their plan of action to tackle the parking and whether or not that's a Parking Oversight Committee or whatever they, they deem appropriate, that we could discuss it in greater detail at that time. So that's, that's what I gather is, is staff's requested direction. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Correct.
So do I have a...
Oh, when we're getting there, I just want to make sure that our, our request here is, is broad-based enough. In other words, you know, it's, it's, it's got a, at the moment, it's got a capitalized committee name in it, if you will. I'm not sure if that's just the way it is or whether we should modify it to say, or, you know, whatever the proposed makeup of, you know, of the force is. So if we need, if you feel that we should modify this resolution to give you the flexibility to come back with a, a proposal, we can do that. I just want to get in direction to see if we, you believe we need to do that or not.
Certainly. You can say and/or other options.
Yeah, I'm asking basically that the staff come back with an action plan, whatever that entails, whether it's a committee, not a committee, but there will be some action plan as to the next step for dealing with the, the parking study and all of the issues that we have just addressed here today. Mr. Tomlinson?
Yeah, I, I'd like to see if maybe some of these ideas that have been expressed tonight, with like the parking from, from 10:30 to 6:00, and also the permit parking, if, if maybe just give us some sort of brief analysis on that, that where, what are our options lie in that? Because some of those ideas could be plausible.
As part of the action plan that staff would come back with?
Just maybe some additional information on those concepts we've discussed tonight, those two in particular for, for my edification.
Does, is that sufficiently clear to staff, that direction?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't need a motion, that's a directive?
It's a directive. Thank you. Taken as such.
Anybody have any comments before we move on?
Just...
Mr. Buzork?
Very quickly, Madam Mayor, and to provide a little more direction. So when you do come back with the Parking Oversight Committee or Task Force or whatever you want to call it, I think you've heard, provide some options. And there's already, you know, been a suggestion that maybe we don't need to create a new, a new committee. We already have a Traffic Improvement Subcommittee. So I'd like to see that analyzed as to whether that is something they could take on, this role of the Parking Oversight Committee, or, you know, provide us options, whether we should go with the suggestion of the parking expert to include the individuals that, that he did list, so that we could, we could have a discussion about how we want the, so it's clear that we're, we're going to have to determine what we want this committee or task force, whatever you want to call it, that we know what it's going to look like. Also, I think one of the suggestions was that we give it a mandate, so we're going to need to really hash out what, what do we expect it to do. So that's what I'd like to see, and, and maybe that's just a reiteration of what the mayor was saying, is that, you know, we, we need a plan. This is what the committee would look like, this is what we expect it to do and what it would accomplish. And if you provide options, that would be a good thing. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you.
And by the first Tuesday meeting of October, correct?
Understood.
Okay. All right. That was number two. Okay, so now we can move on to item 20, Discussion of the City's Record Retention Schedule for Recorded Videos and Format of the City Minutes. Do we have a staff report?
Sure. Kathy Ward has a staff report for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. At the July 18th meeting, the council directed staff to return to, to return to you with a recommended policy on the format of minutes for the official city meetings. I'll just let everybody clear out here just for a second. As a little bit of background, in 1999, the council approved an ordinance to retain the city's videos for three years. In 2008, the city contracted with Granicus to provide 24/7 video streaming and archival software. Granicus allows for permanent storage for all video streamed and archived city meetings at no additional cost. Regarding minutes, there are three types of minutes, verbatim, summary, or action minutes. Staff is currently preparing detailed summary minutes for city council meetings. Legislative body minutes shall be prepared in a manner consistent with the intent of the government code. And the primary purpose of minutes is to memorialize decisions made by the legislative body. If the council agrees to retain recorded videos permanently, then, moving forward, staff is recommending that action minutes be created for city council and all other commissions, subcommittees, boards, where meetings are able to be archived and viewed after each meeting. Staff has also created a city minute policy highlighting these recommendations for and for council approval. I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Wyatt?
I have a question. So the, the advantage I, I have, if we have a permanent online storage that we can access and get verbatim the pieces we want, and then we only have to have action minutes, which reduces our workload in creating the minutes a lot. My question is on committees that we currently don't video on that. We, we pay the cost of, of doing, you know, more detailed minutes, which I'm, I'm curious about the trade-off between what it would cost to us at least to record, at least audio record through this contract possibly, and then go to action minutes as opposed to creating more detailed minutes on all of our committees. If it's more economical, I'd rather take this across all of the committees, that we record them permanently and then only do action minutes.
Okay, so Granicus, our current software provider, does allow for recordings, whether they be live video streamed or archived, and able to be viewed at a later date, so say the next day. So what's happening right now is quite a number of the meetings that we have, commissions, subcommittees, boards, and not sure if, if that is taped. Sorry, I don't have a...
Yep.
Ah, sorry. Anyway, what is happening now is that staff is turning on the video for the purpose of minutes for staff, okay? So all we have to do is change that after the meeting is over to live, basically to put it on public viewing, and that whole meeting will become public. It will, you will only see one camera view, which is viewing the whole dais, and you'll have the audio. And if anybody, if they use... The... To turn on and off your volume, you will be able to hear them and you'll be able to see them, just like you do with the city council meetings.
So, yeah. I guess my, I think this may include, but as you make this policy, I'd like to essentially use it on every committee that it's possible to use it on, and we'll get more accurate data by listening, and it'll reduce staff time, I think, so we should use it broadly.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Okay, so how, how long are these available for people to see online? So we're keeping them permanently, but are they always available for people to look at online?
Yes.
Okay, so as long as we have it, it's available?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I have, and I was talking to the city manager earlier, and Bobby about this, is, is it, it's not possible at this point to get around in the video very well. I know there's jump to points, but when you get to a point, if, you know, like on a YouTube, you kind of slide back and forth and you can move around, whereas these are difficult to move around in. So two things. Can you talk to Granite, is that the name?
Granicus is the name.
Granicus. And see, I, I understand that, bless you, they're updating their software apparently. So see if we can get around more easily in them. And also, is it possible to take out pieces of it and copy it and, you know, say, "I want to put something on my Facebook page, oh, this is what happened." Can I pick, how do I pick out a piece of it and take that video and put it somewhere else?
I'm not sure about your second part of the question because I believe it's proprietary. What do you call that?
Proprietary?
Proprietary, yes. So I'm not sure if they're, you're able to do that because in the past, we give you a DVD, you can buy a DVD of the minutes and then you, you know, of the video, and then you can do what you want with it, but not when it's online, when it's on our software.
Okay, so if you could just confirm that that's not going to be possible because it's proprietary, I would appreciate that. And also, we have videos of various committees, right, planning and FRC. Are those online for, available for people to, to view?
What I'm suggesting is moving forward, okay? I cannot tell you how many months, years, whatever, are available in backlog are still there, but moving forward, we can certainly make them available.
Online, so people can look at any commission, committee they want? Okay. And then the minutes, the preference is to go to summary minutes. So, so what would, tell me what that would look like then?
Actually, the preference would be to go to action minutes, which takes out the, the detailed discussion amongst the council members, basically, and you show the actions of what occurred, and also public comments. You put a sentence or two about what a speaker was, you know, in support or in opposition of, or what their main topic they're speaking about, public hearings. It would always record any of the speak, you know, a small comment about that. But basically, it removes a lot of the council discussion during the item, and it's not detailed in there that we leave that to the video for people to watch.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was calling summary. Now, as to anything that's 5041, I would agree with that, but I have concerns when something is 32, and we just, you know, have action and voting. I would like to see detail of the discussion that was up there because I know it's available online, but, you know, some people look at the minutes, some people like online, and something that is more controversial, how much time are we talking, how many, how many things are controversial like that? How much time are we talking about if we make 5-0 and 4-1 actions, action minutes? But... How much time are we talking about if we make 5-0 and 4-1 actions, action minutes, but something that is 3-2, more, closer to the minutes that we're doing now? Do you have a sense of that?
So you're asking, what's the time difference, or...
Well, I'm asking if you have a sense of, you know, right now, you're spend, you're spending a lot of time, because everything is basically put on there.
Correct.
My, what I'm saying is anything that's 5041, we don't, we don't need that level of detail, but I am concerned if we have a 3-2 vote, there's probably been a lot of discussion, and I would like to see that continue in the minutes.
If that is council's direction, we will do it.
So I was just trying to get a sense from you, as somebody who's intimately familiar with our minutes, what, you know, what, what we're looking at, it seems that that isn't most of our votes.
As they say, whatever council is preferences, staff is, is happy to do it.
Okay.
Kathy has provided an example in the item, I think it's Supporting Document B in your item, which is a version of the July 18th council meeting minutes in an action minute format, and if I, if I counted correctly, that version is 13 pages versus the version that you approved earlier tonight, item three was 22 pages.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Tomlinson?
Madam Clerk, would it be accurate to say that best practices, in your opinion, would probably be action-style minutes?
With, and, and this is, I seem, I've done a little bit of a survey to some of the Orange County cities, more of the cities are moving to permanent retention, and because they do have the video streaming or some sort of archived video, and because of that, they are moving more towards, the best practices is towards action minutes, because you are able to see everything online.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was thinking.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have a question for the clerk, Madam Clerk. I, you, I don't know if I heard an exact number, if you know the exact number, but I did just hear the city manager bring up that item three, I think was, was the FRC minutes, I don't know if that was the number or not, but the, there is time that goes into, as, as the mayor pro tem alluded, not only into preparing our minutes, but for the other committees, and I think it's an interesting idea that we're not just gonna be talking about our minutes. So I'll try to make it a simple question. Do you actually have a number, are we tracking the hours that it took, just for example, to do our current minutes for this, for the last meeting, and also for the FRC minutes? Do you have those numbers?
I, I would say probably at least 10 hours for our current set of minutes, and that doesn't include review time, that's just the first round. The FRC minutes, I know they're pretty detailed as well, so I have, I really don't know, because I don't know how long the last set was, but it was pretty significantly, I thought it was pretty long, so it would probably be that or more, because when you're talking about numbers, like FRC does, that's even harder to record in minutes than it is, you know, when you're trying to summarize what somebody's saying. It takes more time, 'cause it's more details.
Okay.
I, I had been asked the question about the FRC minutes earlier today, so I asked Diane how long it took her to prepare them, and she told me her guess was eight hours.
Eight?
Eight hours.
Eight hours, okay, thank you.
And that, does she have any estimate of what it would take going to action minutes?
I didn't ask that question, I don't know.
Okay, so, okay. Any other, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I asked that this be put on, 'cause I was concerned about the length of minutes, but what really started, or triggered my concern was the June, the June 6th board meeting, or council meeting, that I did not attend, and the minutes were wrong. I mean, they, I, I brought it up, because we reported a vote out of closed session that was 5-0, I wasn't in attendance, so it couldn't have been a 5-0 vote. We went back and looked, and the vote was never reported out on those anyway, I'm not sure how that got in there. I saw something in here that said somebody had edited the minutes before they got to us, and that was in, last month, the mayor received the minutes in advance and edited them in a way, whatever. My concern is that if we, if we do a hybrid of this, it doesn't solve the problem on why, why I wanted to bring this up. We, we have video, we should just go with the video, and if people wanna see it, that's where, that's where you'll find the details of the meeting, and if you wanna put a scrubber bar in, so it's easier to move through the action item, I think that's a great idea. But I, I don't think creating a hybrid solves the problem of how this whole conversation started anyway, other than reducing the amount of time that, that the clerk and her staff needs to, to expend to, to create the minutes. But I, but I think if we're gonna do it, we either do it all the way, or we just don't do it at all. I mean, I, I, I don't know why, on a 3-2 vote, that gets special preference, other than, yeah, there's gonna be more discussion, but at, at that point, I think it's even more important that the, the community gets to see exactly what happened, instead of having just, you know, some summary minute, there's some pseudo-summary minutes there that's not verbatim, but it, it just kinda gives a picture, it doesn't give you the whole thing anyway. Why wouldn't you want them to go back to the video and see exactly what happened? I mean, I'm, I don't understand that. I, I thought the issue was to help the clerk out, and then also to make sure that there aren't inaccuracies in our minutes again. That's the only reason I brought it up.
Well, I will note that the, that the report of the 5-0, which, there was a 5-0 vote, it was just not reported at the time of the 5-0 vote. I will say that in, in the time I've been sitting here, there's only been one potential issue with the minutes, so it, it's not like it's a pervasive issue that they're not accurate, they are extremely accurate.
Well, but that's, that's the point, I'm not, I'm not arguing that there was a 5-0 vote taken, the minutes are supposed to reflect exactly what happened at that meeting, and there have been some instances where they don't. So, and there's some inaccuracies in it, so just go to the video. I mean, that's all I'm saying, why would we change that? We either do it all, or we don't do it, we either go all the way, or we don't do it at all. That's all I'm saying. I mean, it, it eliminates the potential for inaccuracies in the minutes.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to know if there was any public comments this evening on this matter?
No public comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on this?
I, I, I do worry, I mean, I, I like the idea of having them online, I think we always should have them online, so we should do that, no matter what, just make sure that they're retained online from all of the, all of the committees that we can. I, I do, I, I don't think that, well, first of all, I think on the 3-2 votes, if you take the entire conversation on those, those, while, while maybe we don't have many, sometimes they tend to go on for very long periods of time, so it's a lot of minutes on them. But my worry is that it isn't possible to do verbatim on them, so we're getting, you know, when you start to get into some of the, what I actually intended versus what was the words actually, or the, the summary, we get a little bit of inaccuracies in there just because you can't get every word. So I, I think that having them online and, and, and listen, listening or watching is, will give us more accuracy and, and reduce staff. I, 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 I understand why the 3-2 votes, they bring the most interest, and I guess if we feel like we get a number of people who simply don't have access to them, if we do them the other way, then we should go back and look at that again, but unless we get some feedback that we've cut out a lot of audience, I'd like, I think it's actually better to go all the way.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, so first, we need a motion to modify the retention schedule from currently three years to permanent retention.
Move the action.
A second.
Oh. I had a question on that, so, so you're, you're changing actually the recommended action from three years, the recommended action says for a three-year period.
From three years to permanent.
Oh, from, okay, I misread it, okay, got it. No further questions.
So, no discussion, no more discussion on that vote? Motion carries, and can I just direct staff to put the other videos up there along, or do we need a motion for that? Or is it going to happen?
It will happen with your direction, assuming there's no objection.
All right. I am directing that we put all of our videos up there for people to look at.
Thank you.
Okay, so the second item is to approve new city council policy regarding format of the city minutes, so I'm hearing that they're going to be, the format will go from verbatim, is that what it is now?
Almost.
Almost verbatim.
Detailed summary.
Detailed summary.
To action.
To action.
Correct, and that would, that would all be city council, as well as all commissions, all subcommittees, everyone. For all.
We go, we approve the council policy regarding format of city minutes.
Are you referring to Action Document A, Mayor Pro Tem?
Pardon?
You're referring to Action Document A, is that what your motion?
So I'm referring on, on, on item, item two under 20?
Right.
Approve a new council policy.
Okay.
Go from almost verbatim to action.
Then I'll second that.
In all committees, all minutes.
Okay. So, Mr. Tomlinson? I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, motion carries 5-0, well, not only will it make your job easier, it'll make my job a lot easier, too.
Mine, too, by the way, I wanted to thank you for suggesting.
I have to read those things. Okay. Moving on, item 21, Professional Services Agreements for Supplemental Plan Check, Counter, Inspection, and Code Enforcement Services. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to recognize Ursula for this report.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This item is before you to consider contracts with third parties to augment building staff services in the following categories: plan check, inspections, application intakes, and code enforcement. The code enforcement is due to a current vacancy, so salary savings is being utilized to pay for those services. Plan check, inspection, and application intake services directly correlate to project-seeking building permits. The volume and complexity of the projects dictates the amount of time necessary to process these permits. The staff report provides some data regarding history, historic building activity for comparison purposes. This data demonstrates that building activity is at an all-time high, and supports staff's request to augment existing staff. The staff report also provides a list of surrounding cities and the turnaround times for plan check review. Dana Point is generally in alignment with its neighbors in terms of turnaround times. The staff report also identifies complex projects that are currently under construction that need intensive inspection services. Sort of a case in point is the South Cove project, which is currently under construction and requires an onsite inspector three full days per week, and has an anticipated construction life of about three years. A city only has three in-house inspectors, and there's a couple of other projects identified in the staff report that are complex in nature, you can quickly see that we don't not have enough inspectors to be able to perform all those functions. A major project can have, like I said, a two-to-three-year construction timeline, and will need inspection services through a certificate of occupancy being issued by the building division. Again, there's more detailed information in the staff report. At this time, I'd like to entertain any questions. Thank you. And Mark Sutton is available as well to answer questions.
Any questions, Mr. Wyatt?
I, I, I have questions, yes, so hopefully not, so in terms of, of scheduling these resources, who sets the, who sets their schedule?
So the building official oversees the building division services, and it's generally accepted metrics that you can do safely, about 12, you're kinda pushing it when you get to 15 inspections per day. I've overseen building functions in other jurisdictions, as Mr. Sutton has extensively as well, and that is sort of the, the rule of thumb there. When you start to try to put more inspections in, staff isn't, the inspectors are not able to do a good job. Plan check, I think you saw the comparison chart in the staff report, those are general turnaround times that are sort of expected in the industry, we're in alignment there, maybe in some areas we're slightly better, in some areas, there's other cities that are slightly better, so I didn't see anything there that we're providing services that are either not, that are, we're gold-plating services, or on the other extreme, that we're, you know, really far behind. But ultimately, it is the building official who oversees that staff, who conducts plan check, inspections, and then the processing of new applications for building permits.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I, I asked my question correctly, at least you didn't answer the question I asked, so, or at least I, you didn't ask the question I intended to ask, so let me try again. So we, these are supplemental resources to our staff, and we didn't commit to spend all the, if we sign these agreements, we don't commit to spend all of those dollars. We, there are not to exceed amounts, so it depends on when, what our need is that would determine how much of that we spent, correct?
Correct, so...
So then we look at how we determine our need, that is what, you know, and how far ahead we have to determine, and do we have, I, I didn't see, for example, whether if we call in somebody at the counter, it may be good practice, but is it a full day, can you have half-day schedules? I'm just wondering how much control we have once we sign the agreement.
Right, absolutely, I'll let Mark add, but we have a lot of control over that agreement. The inspectors that we've used have not been full-time every day, they've been part-time inspectors. The permit technician we've brought in is, been close to full-time at some, maybe for a period of a couple of weeks, and then, but yes, absolutely, there is a lot of flexibility there, and it's constantly being monitored, and I don't know, Mark, if you wanted to add anything else.
Yeah, Ursula is absolutely correct, we actually monitor on a daily basis, depending on the workload that comes in, how many people come to the counter, the actual level of activity, and in particular, for inspection, how many inspections are out there, and as Ursula indicated, if for some reason we, by chance, which doesn't happen very often, but we get what we consider a light day, then our contract inspectors usually only make it till noon, and then we supplement it later for...
And now, some of these are, we send to field, obviously, but some work behind the counter, is that correct? And do we, I mean, when, when things come in, there's a backlog sometimes, right? We, we deal with stuff that has to be worked offline, I guess, when you're not standing in front of the customer. Do we tend to deal with the customer first with our own staff and push backlog to...
Yes, actually, when we set up the counter, the counter is set up so that we focus on the customer, and when I was asked to put together the in-house staffing back in 2006, the direction from the city manager and from the city council at that time was very specific that they wanted to go from a four-hour, no customer service, to a five-star customer service type of format. And so we even removed telephone, if you notice, when you're at the counter, if you were, if you were to get a phone call, you would have to wait till you're done with your customer, and then you would go back to your desk. And when I first got here, we actually had phones at the counter, and people would come in, they would pick up the phone, they would do some things that I didn't feel was appropriate, and we pretty much have fixed those types of situations where we do focus on our customer. The intake that you take in while you're there is the paperwork and the processing and making sure you have complete submittal and things of that nature.
Mark, if I can just interject for one moment, I did wanna take the opportunity to explain that the plan check is the first step to getting a building permit, we do have an in-house plan checker who can do some of those things, and so there are some criteria that are set for whether he's gonna take this, or whether we're gonna farm it out to one of the third-party reviewers. The, and Mark can talk about that criteria in a moment, but then, when we farm it out to the third-party reviewers, they are off-site, so they are in somewhere, some office, they get the plans, they review them, they mark them up, they send them back to us. In terms of the inspectors, they're absolutely out... In terms of the inspectors, they're absolutely out in the field when they're here, and as Mark mentioned, we monitor the workload for the day, and they can be here all day, or they can be here half a day, or even less. The permit technician, that is a counter function, and the need is based on the sort of volume of activity happening that day, while counter visits are not necessarily the best indicator of how busy we are because they don't always necessarily end up in a widget, per se. If our widgets are our services, like a building permit or a plan check, they do take up time that then is not allowing somebody who is coming in with all of their sets of plans. For example, the Vista Del Mar project, which is the Union Bank project, they came in with their third plan check the other day, submittal for third plan check. That was a two-hour ordeal. It's a pretty big project, large sets of plans. That's how long it took to intake those, those plans. And generally, it's your first intake that is the most time-intensive. So, you know, the complexity of the project, the volume that we're receiving, the number of questions that they're answering just from the general public, all dictates kind of how busy those folks are that day.
Just to be, just to be fair here, I'm not second-guessing how you operate the counter or how effective it is. I mean, that's always worth reviewing. Are we as efficient as we could be? I just wanted to make sure before we signed an agreement, I understood what it was that we were obligating the city to do. And then the last, if, if I, if we, if we spent all of the money that we're contracting for in this set of contracts, is that all that money budgeted at this time?
So I think that is a confusing thing about the staff report. The consultants are, I think you should think of them as sort of a list of on-call consultants that we can utilize, and what we have budgeted is $250,000. And so you'll note that their contracts cumulatively are in excess of that amount, and that's just because we're not sure who necessarily is going to get all this work. Some, we could just go with one of them, they could get the entire 250, we could, so there was flexibility put in, but it's absolutely our job to make sure we don't exceed the 250 without coming back to the city council, and we need to manage that.
So, so, yeah, I, I read the, I tried to work through the numbers, that's the reason for the questions. I, so signing the contractual agreements doesn't actually budget the funds, right? So when you hit the 250, you're out of money, you have to come back for more money or something. Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm a little confused because we have multiple contracts, right?
Yes.
And each contract says that it is for an amount not to exceed $250,000. It doesn't say cumulative.
Yes, and I, and I agree, it is a confusing way that it was set up. It was the desire to be set up this way. It's, as you can see, it's really only two consultants.
Right.
It's five contracts with two consultants, and I am just guaranteeing to you that we understand that what is budgeted is $250,000, and we will manage these consultants within that amount.
Okay, so, but when you, I mean, yes, I, I understand you, you make that representation to me, but when I look at the documents, it says 250,000 on this contract and 250,000 on this contract. So if I approve both these contracts, in effect, I'm approving 500,000.
Only if we have the spending authority to spend it. Right now, we only have the spending authority to spend $250,000.
Okay, and.
But we could spend it all with one contract and none with the other four.
Okay, so where is the spending authority? I must be missing that.
The council-approved budget.
Okay, so on the council-approved budget, there's a line item for.
That's correct.
Consultants.
That's correct.
For plan check, all these various.
Correct.
250.
Yes.
Okay, but under the contracts, we are committing, and they are committing to us, and we are committing to them not to exceed 250.
Correct.
Okay.
If I could just make a suggestion that whoever, if anyone, gets around to making a motion, that in the motion, you just clarify that you're approving both contracts. They both are not to exceed contracts, but you just add to your motion that the cumulative amount authorized for both combined shall not exceed $250,000. In that way, it'll be really clear in your record that that's what you've done.
Okay, thank you. And I know, Mr. City Manager, we were discussing this prior to, prior to the meeting here today. My concern is that our number of employees has increased, and here we are still hiring consultants. But you, you gave me a chart here saying that since 2008, we still have the same number of employees in that planning department. Is that correct?
For the council's benefit, the chart is on the screen behind you. That represents the volume of permits and the, the assessed valuation of those permits. And what I noted from information I received from staff is that the number of staff processing that same volume of permits has not changed since 2008.
Okay. And I, I had seven and a half.
Correct.
People, full-time equivalents.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions. How many, how many firms did we look at? Did we go up for bid on this?
Mark, why don't you answer that question?
Currently, we have five firms that we've looked at that we use, depending on the type of project that comes in and the need to process the development application.
So, so we looked at five different firms, we narrowed it down to these two?
We actually have contracts with more than just these two. We also have WC Three and CSG. Their contracts have not come up for renewal at this point. Currently, these are the only two contracts that we have. As Ursula had indicated earlier, we try to have a pool of them so that when the development hits us, we are able to respond very quickly, and it depends on the size and magnitude and the need of the, of the development as to which firm we would go with for their services that are, that exceeds our capacity.
So, and I understand that. My question is, how often do we take this out for bid? I mean, I, what I'm getting at is Ursula mentioned it earlier, of having a true on-call list. And how many people are we going to put on it? Do we have multiple on-call lists? And the real question is, why do we have to sign contracts with these, with these companies when all we're giving you is a spending authority of $250,000? I mean, why are we signing multiple contracts with them when they know they're the only two people on the list to do this work? You're going to get it, but it depends on your workload, our workload, if you're available, if you're not available. Why do we have to have, sign these contracts?
There's a multiple reasons for that. One of the biggest reasons is that when we sign the contract, we make sure that the city's liability is protected for the services that they're providing for us. They have to have certain insurance limitations. They have to make sure that they have the, you know, the qualified staff to perform that, and we have to make sure that, that all of the legal aspects of a contract are covered in order to allow someone to act on our behalf to do a function that we're required to do.
Well, why wouldn't we just put that as a requirement? If you're going to be on our, on our on-call list, you have to have all of this, you have to have all these qualifications to be considered to be on our on-call list. I mean, this is very confusing and a very convoluted way, in my, my opinion, when we're authorizing $250,000, but we're also allowing you to, to sign $500,000 worth of contracts. And that, you know, I'm not sure that's.
Well, my understanding of the law, and I would have to defer to Mr. Munoz, is that when we went over, and according to our ordinances, when we go over $35,000 in order to deal with firms, they're required to have a contract.
You're missing my point, is we could easily authorize $250,000 for this work, okay? And if you want to be on our list, you have to meet all these requirements. We're not going to give you a 250,000. So, well, there are four people on this list, and we're only authorizing 250 grand. You're asking us to allow you to sign a million dollars' worth of contracts. My, my question being, is, is there an easier way to do this so it's not quite as confusing? Just create the on-call list. If you're going to be on it, you have to, you have to go through the same process everybody else does. We're going to qualify whoever you guys think are the top two or three, whatever you want on it. But that list is only authorized to consume $250,000, period, and that's up to you on who gets that work.
Right, and we kind of do that because in order to, for us to consider doing a professional services agreement with a firm, there is some minimum criteria that we require.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, I sit on TCA, and we, we do this all the time, and we don't issue multiple contracts. You, if you get on our list, you're on our list, and then we will job it out as, as needed. We don't issue, you know, $600,000 worth of contracts. On a $600,000 project, three firms don't each get a $600,000 contract.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to take the councilman's direction, having come from the county and issued many, many lists of on-call architect and engineering contracts. We've got some experience with this. We'll take a look at it, work with Ursula and her staff, and come back to you. But in the time being, we would recommend that you approve the, the recommended action so that we can move forward and be able to farm this work out as the need comes in and continue to report back to you on the utilization of these contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Denny, and I appreciate that, and I'm okay with that tonight, and I'll make the motion to approve this. But I want to give the direction, any future, or on, any future contracts like this, we talk about on-call lists. And even take it a step further, you know, one of the things, you know, we see this, but we don't know what criteria you use to select them, if there's a matrix, how many people were involved. I think that'd be important for.
Understood.
Transparency process, that we know how many people were involved in this. How, when was the last time this went out for bid?
Understood.
Okay, all right. I'll make the motion to.
I have one more question that's.
Yes, Mr. Wyatt?
So, Mark brought up the fact that there are five or six contracts, actually, not just other companies. I mean, again, it doesn't hit the limit, but are they part of the $250,000 pool? Are there, they come out of a separate budget item?
The amount that's budgeted for professional services is limited to any contract that we currently have for those types of services that we're speaking.
So the code enforcement is not part of the 250,000.
That's a different line item on the budget, yes.
Correct, yes. And this is the first time we've broken it up this way, because I think we could have just had one contract for each consultant, but there was a desire from finance that this would, from an accounting standpoint, be easier to track this way. So that's why it's coming before you this way here, and I think there, each of the consultants are on a term, and we've been bringing them to you as the terms expire, which is why these are here today. But absolutely, we can move forward. I'm familiar with on-call services for engineers and architects as well, but that's typically for a project where you have a dedicated amount of money, and only one consultant is going to consume the entire amount of that money. This will be different in that we want to be able to pull from multiple firms within the allocated resources.
And you'll find that this isn't unique to Dana Point and the other jurisdictions in which I've served over the last 39 years. We've always had several so that when development comes in, because you never know. I mean, there could be one development walk-in tomorrow, and it's 250 just to do the plan check. And then we would be back at the next meeting asking you again for consideration for the rest of the projects that are currently in the pipeline. So this is not unique to Dana Point. We do this, and I've done this in several other jurisdictions. It's normally during these types of development spurts that we have them, and we've had it since 2010, as you can see from the chart that, that we put together for the staff report. But when you get to those points, that's when you need to do that, and it is kind of just like what Councilman Miller has said. It's, you know, you have a ladder of people that you have. It's just in the plan checking and inspection services, it's normally done through professional services. It normally has a limit because the state actually has a limit that says you have to have an agreement when you get beyond 50,000, and that's how we normally do it. So in this particular case, 250,000 may last the whole year, or it may just be the first quarter. We just don't know, because we don't know what's coming through the door next.
And the applicant pays these fees, right?
Absolutely. Before the money goes out, it's in, in the general fund.
That was my next question. Do we get the money upfront, or?
I want to clarify that. On plan check, the way it works is it's different. It's not time immaterial, so they're not getting an hourly fee for their services. They get a percentage of the plan check fee that we charge. Our plan check fee that we charge is based on valuation and the fee ordinance that the city council has adopted. So we are getting good cost recovery on plan check services, but for inspection services and the permit technician, we are taking in a fee based on the fee ordinance that the council has adopted, which I know you're familiar. That has not been updated in a long time. We are not getting full cost recovery on that. So the general fund is subsidizing those, those services for inspections, whether they're in-house or consultants, because we're only collecting the fee that we're allowed to charge under our fee ordinance.
And do we, are we tracking what it's costing us and what we're getting? So that we know, okay, plan check, we lose, you know, 20% or?
Well, so plan check, we're pretty good on, because again, it's a percentage of.
Do we have, do we have, okay, this is what we charged, and this is what we paid out as the city?
So the fee we collect from the applicant on plan check, we, 70% goes to the plan checker, and we get to keep 30% for administering the contact, contract, taking in the plans, distributing the plans. On the inspection services, there, there is a fee study that will be coming before you with a lot of detail about what our cost actually is to do those services and the fee that's currently being collected. So.
And in the case of code enforcement, that's all funded by the general fund.
I have one more.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Wyatt.
So I want to, Mr. City Attorney, just in, coming back to Councilmember Miller's point, when we bring these people in, we will have to have some kind of contract, right? Whether it's off a list, there's a contractual agreement of some sort with them, right?
We need to have a contract.
We're pulling, yeah, so, so whether that contract looks like this one with an amount limit in it, or it doesn't have, has a, a different way to allocate it, that ultimately, the insurance requirements, the contractual obligations, the attorney fees, you know, recovery on a suit, all of those would have to be in the contract with that person to be on the list, right?
Yeah, we can structure it differently to address Councilmember Miller's issue, but you have to have a contract. I mean, you know, I mean.
So we're, we're, yeah. The reason I'm relatively familiar with, you know, not to exceed blanket contracts where you issue work order, or, you know, you, you pull in against that contract whenever you need to, and we haven't, we haven't guaranteed that we spend $250,000. We've given them a target number to staff to so they can plan sometimes, you know, a little bit, thinking they'll, they'll get some percentage of that. So it could work either way. We just need to figure out which is better. I just wanted to make sure that contractually, they're going to have about the same requirements.
Yeah, the contracts look almost identical except for the payment provision, the amount of the contract provision. You know, and I need to think through, you know, the exact way to do it, but you could have something like not to exceed purchase orders to be issued, you know, and you'd set it up to where they're authorized to enter into purchase orders, and then we manage it that way. We, you know, I need to look at the way the county does it. I'm not positive how they're doing it or how TCA does it, you know, but, I mean, there's a lot of ways to skin this cat. But conceptually, you want to have them sign a document that says they're agreeing to all these terms where we have liability protection, you know, and all the normal things you would see in a contract. And then really, the challenge here is just how we're going to meter out the, the funds to them, knowing that we have a maximum of $250,000 to spend.
Okay, so I'm looking here at Exhibit A, which is their compensation. And it says, complete plan review is to be 75% of the fee established by the city or an hourly rate of $75. How do we, how do we determine which one we're going to pay? And it seems to be 75%.
Right, initially, when a plan comes in, there's a valuation and a fee set, and they get 75%. When it gets past the second plan review session, then it goes hourly. And so they actually have an hourly amount that they can charge, and then we charge back the applicant for that cost as well. the applicant for that cost as well. And it does work out, as Ursula said before, about a 70-30 split so that we do have the ability to cover administrative costs for processing and tracking and doing all the things that are required to process plan reviews.
Okay, so, and I'm probably just not understanding how this works, but it says repetitive plan review shall be 75% of the model and 25% for repetitive plans.
Yeah, repetitive plan refers to tracks. And if you have a track of homes, single-family homes, and you have like three or four sets that are identical, you know, A, B, C, and D.
Models.
And models. And you plan review those and then you, in your track, then submit for the additional, say it's 100 or 200 homes. The ones passed, the ones that you've gone through and done a thorough analysis, structural analysis, all the way down.
We don't, we don't have a lot of those.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of those here, but that's what that's there for.
That happened in the 70s.
These firms that we're dealing with do have large clients that do that. That's how they calculate their fee for the repetitive ones, because you can't charge for something that you don't do.
Okay, so, I mean, I understand this is your custom and practice, but I don't see that this agreement actually says that, you know, we get to this certain point and then we're not at 75% anymore, then we're at the $75 an hour. Do you see what I mean?
I understand what you're saying. You're getting into a level of detail in the administering of the contract that I'm just not familiar with, so...
I'm just concerned about signing, I mean, I know this is what we do and, but you know, lawyers always look at what's going to go wrong. And then we look at the document and somebody who doesn't know anything about us is looking at this document saying, well, it says 75% or $75 an hour. How do I know which?
So our, our system is set up, and, and Mark, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on this, but we, the applicant, so the number of plan checks is really predicated on how good the plans are. So if they're really good plans, where their architect did a really good job of following the California Building Code and catching everything, you know, conceivably, we could just have one plan check review. Generally, they need two and that's on a good set of plans. And so it goes back and forth a couple of times in order to discourage poor sets of plans being submitted and us bearing the burden of that cost and going through this iterative process over and over. We charge the applicants and they're aware of this, that if it goes to a third plan check, fourth plan check, you're going to pay the hourly rate. And so that, that's what that is about.
Okay, and I hear what you're saying, I'm just saying, it doesn't seem to say that.
I'm getting a greater, I'm getting a greater understanding of how this works tonight than I knew before, so...
Okay, so I, I'm a little...
Well, Madam Mayor, just, just to clarify, when we get the plan in, we prepare it and we route it to the contractor, they are told what the, the condition is for that plan review each time.
Are they told in writing or are we?
Yes, we have a transmittal form and it says right on the form that this is a first review and it's the 70 or 75%, whatever the contract was for that review. When it gets to the third one, as Ursula had indicated earlier, then it says on there that this is third review, this is now hourly. Keep track of your hours and let us know what the costs are.
Okay. Okay, well, that makes me feel a little better.
I'll second Councilman Miller's motion then.
What's that?
I'll second Councilman Miller's motion.
Okay, I'll have to remember what, what, I didn't write it down. What was your motion?
To approve the recommended action.
Well, but you had, you had something that you added to it, as I recall.
Oh, with, with the direction to come back with, I'm sorry, with the direction to come back with...
Look at on-call lists going forward.
On-call lists, yes, right.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the recommended action with the direction to come back with an on-call list.
Correct.
Any seconds on that?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Okay, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Mark, for your patience in educating us.
Yes, yes. I feel better. Okay, I noticed people have come in and out, so can we take five? We're taking five. Approval of a consultant services agreement with AMEC Foster Wheeler Environmental and Infrastructure Inc. for as-needed technical water quality program. So staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Matt Sinekori, who will be giving the staff report on this item, Public Works Director, Matt Sinekori.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denny. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. The City of Dana Point is a permitty under the, along with other South Orange County cities and the County of Orange, under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Order, the regional permit, issued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. That regional permit now requires all agencies to prepare and implement a water quality improvement plan, WQIP, as well as a city-specific local implementation plan, which this city council approved on March 21st of this year. The city has a very good compliance record with the regional permit due to the leadership of this city council and the support of our senior water quality engineer, Lisa Zawaski, who is here in our audience. Lisa, if you could raise your hand, just for everybody to see out there. Water quality regulations and requirements, however, have become much more complex and technically challenging, requiring significant technical study and review to prepare needed reporting information. The need for technical experts in this area was identified in the budget process and funded by this city council as part of the recent two-year budget. Public Works issued a request for proposal for technical water quality support services and received proposals from four firms which are outlined in your staff report. Those proposals were reviewed and AMEC Foster Wheeler was determined to be the, the most experienced, responsive, better with the lowest hourly rates. All of the right things we like to see in a consultant. The city council has set aside the spending limit for these services and the approved budget of $60,000 for fiscal year 1718 and $80,000 for fiscal year 1819. I want to note that the consultant agreement allows for a spending limit of $100,000 per year to allow the city council flexibility to add budget for these services if needed in each fiscal year. It is important to note that these services are provided on an as-needed basis and your staff will stay within the city account, city council assigned budget for each year for the entire term of the agreement. The Ocean Water Quality Subcommittee supports the staff recommendation, which is to approve the consultant services agreement in your staff report and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Both Lisa and I are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay, I have a question. All right, it says $100,000 per year, as, as you said, but are, we've budgeted 60?
So the current budget that you've authorized is for 60,000 in the first year and 80,000 in the second year. The thinking with the agreement is that you would allow us spending, allow the contract to have a spending authority up to $100,000 to allow flexibility so we don't have to keep bringing the contract back to the city council if you desire to have a spend additional effort on this, on this work.
Okay, so by signing this, we are giving the authority to go over the budget without coming back here?
That's not what we're talking about. And if it suits the city council and the mayor, we can add a clause to the contract that clearly states that the spending maximum would be $100,000 if the city council budget allows for that spending.
Okay.
Because that is definitely not the intent of your staff, is to exceed what you've budgeted.
Okay.
Either way, future action would require council action. It would either require council action to, it would require two actions, action to adjust the budget and action to adjust the contract, or as proposed, just action to adjust the budget.
Right, so I guess I'm, I'm questioning why we wouldn't do both at the same time, why we would agree to do more than we budgeted?
You're not agreeing to do more, you're giving yourself the opportunity to do more if you change the budget later.
Okay. Did you have something, Mr. Moore?
This, this feels to me like exactly what we just talked about. Am I right that we're, we're actually signing a contract that's above what your spending authority is for, I mean, this is a little different though, because we could have given the whole 250 to one of those firms. Now you're asking for $100,000, but you're only authorized to $60,000. But you still have to come back to us if you want to spend over the 60,000. So why, why would you sign a contract for more than you're authorized for when you have to come, you have to come back and ask for the money anyway? I'm a little confused on why we want to authorize 100,000 on the contract.
Again, the intention wasn't to forego what the city council had asked us to do, which is to stay within that spending limit. If it pleases this council and the mayor, we could adjust the contract to simply say that we will spend $60,000 in fiscal year 1718, $80,000 in the second year, and then in subsequent budgets, we would incur the spending limit that the city council sets for this contract.
I guess the question is, is there... Specifically to answer your question, anytime you ask a contractor to amend the contract, it gives them an opportunity to change their pricing.
That was my question. Is there an advantage to us to do it this way?
That, that would be the advantage.
Is that you're locking them in up to 100,000 even though you only have authorization to 60?
If, if we get authorization to spend up to that amount.
Correct.
There's, there's a cost to amend the contract.
Right, you know, and I understand.
And there's the upside of they could change pricing mid-year and mid, so...
So how did we pick 100,000, just out of curiosity?
We expect the regulations to get more difficult going forward. That was a number that Lisa and I discussed, just that might meet our expectations in future years for the life of the contract.
Okay, thank you. Did anybody have any?
Having said in on the meetings when we discussed this, the, the regulations are getting pretty, pretty com, complex and, you know, and we're picking an approach to try to make sure we meet them. This is the first time we've really dealt with some of these regulations, so our, our confidence that we can get it done for them, amount of money is not as high as we might want it to be.
Okay.
So I think that also adds to why we give ourselves a little room, but we'll have to come back and deal with it in the budget, so...
And, you know, we ask these questions not because there's any concern about staff, just, you know, when we're signing something, we just want to know what we're signing and want to be sure we're doing the right thing. So we don't want to leave that misimpression. Okay, any other comments? All right, do I have a motion to approve the contract?
I move we approve the contract.
I'll second that.
Okay, fight about it. No discussion, vote? Motion carries and then the next action item is to authorize the city manager or is designated to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Gosh, I was waiting. Okay, discussion, vote?
I, I think we should thank our Public Works Director. And welcome.
Is this your first council meeting as Public Works Director?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it is.
Well, I'm remiss for not recognizing that.
And engineer, as his sign says.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you very much. I look forward to continuing to serve the council and for the city manager.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations and welcome. Okay, item 23, approval of a professional services agreement by and between the City of Dana Point and DUDEC. Staff report, please.
Yes, Senior Planner John Champa from Community Development has a staff report. John?
Hi, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm the Case Planner, John Champa, for the request before you tonight to allow the city council to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement between the city and the consultant firm, DUDEC. The contract is for a sea level rise study as well as a local coastal program amendment to address impacts of sea level rise and climate change for consistency with the Coastal Act. The contract will be funded by the Coastal Commission grant in the amount of $135,000. The project will aid the city in evaluating future coastal hazard impacts and identify new and enhanced coastal hazard adaptation strategies to address sea level rise and climate change as it relates to the city's beaches, coastal access, recreational amenities, and sensitive uses. Staff went through a request for proposals process where four firms submitted proposals. Staff is recommending DUDEC and Moffett and Nickel as the firm, based on their experience in coastal hazards, sea level rise, local coastal programs, public outreach, as well as staff's experience working with both of those firms with previous work. The contract is for a total cost as previously... The contract is for a total cost, as previously stated, at $135,000 and a timeline of 15 months to complete the project. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff's available for any questions.
And is the amount, the amount of the grant as well, the amount of the contract and the amount of the grant?
That's correct.
We like that. Any questions? Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to kind of make a, I don't really have any questions about this. I mean, this is an important study that we need, but I, but I would like staff to realize this is an area of town that we really need to focus on trying to save. This is where the surf industry started. So Capo Beach is an important part of our, our community. We need to make sure that DUDAC understands we are trying to save those coastal amenities down there, the park, the park, the, the public access surveying, the parking lots, and our surfing heritage. So, you know, if you could relay that on to them, those are important things, and if they can give us ways that we can actually take a look at solutions on how to save that beach, because there's so much recession going on down there, we may lose it in the, in the coming years. So I would just like to make that comment and give, give direction to staff to talk to DUDAC about that and see, see if they have any ideas. Thanks.
Any other comments? We do have one public comment. Mr. Richard Gardner, if you would please come up, state your name and where you live. Thank you, welcome.
I'm Richard Gardner from Capistrano Beach. I decided to speak on this one because I've been through the Moffett study on the, the bite study for sand transport along the coast. I haven't seen a good sea level rise study that goes out, you know, many years, the ones that are, everybody's talking about. But I thought the first thing I would recommend is that this council might consider partnering with South Coast Water District because much of the infrastructure that might be impacted by sea level rise or storm events that washed up across might be, might have effects on the, on some of your water and sewer systems. You know, infiltrating the sewer system is a problem, could affect Saquah, pump stations, power, and other things. Then, of course, there's the question of the County of Orange. Although they were the main entity that used Moffett in the original study, and Moffett also did the San Diego County study. The Capistrano Beach area where the, the big stones were placed, which was a real problem because no one could access the beach, you know, it was real dangerous, and even if you're light on your feet, you know, you might get one stuck in between the boulders. So now they have changed that, and they've made it a lot easier to come from the sidewalk, go over the rock, and into the sand, and that's better. But I see that the state park is using a different way of, it's armoring, okay? And many people feel that armoring is not the right approach. So you might want to have a partner in the state parks for this, Doheny State Park, you've mentioned, South Coast Water District for all the infrastructure that's laying right there at sea level, or actually below sea level, and, and maybe the county. So if you're going to have a good study for sea level rise and these impacts, you may want to include some partners. Now, just remember, you have one other partner just south of here that has done a great amount of work in San Clemente. San Clemente has had, transported a lot of sand in and replenished their whole beach down at North Beach. They spent a lot of money and they got a lot of grants, so you have a partner there, and any sand transport that would occur in the Capistrano Beach area might eventually migrate south and improve sand down below. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anybody want to speak to that?
I, I can just speak to some of that, is we see the agencies that the gentlemen recognize as stakeholders, and part of the Coastal Commission grant requirement is that we include the stakeholders through this review process, and also, you know, try to gather some of their information that they already have that we can leverage towards this project. So they will absolutely be reached out to by staff and the consultants to ensure that we get the best available plan forward.
Thank you, and thank you. Any other comment? So, do I have a motion to-
Move the item.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion? Motion carries. Okay, item 25. Oh, 24. Just rushing through it there. Okay, Adoption of a Resolution of the Dana Point City Council Amending and Reinstating the Policy Relating to the Acceptance and Dedication of Equipment. Staff, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In my short period of time here at the city, as your former community services director, I've had a number of occasions where there were requests for opportunities to recognize former Dana Point residents via plaques and other types of memorials in our parks. In doing a little research, it was found that the council had a policy, had rescinded that policy over some controversy over and overproliferation, but yet we still got asked the question over time. So I had asked Brian McClure to take a look at that prior policy and see if there might be a way to clean it up a bit where we could accommodate some of those requests on a case-by-case basis while still trying to protect and preserve the, the beauty of our parks with not overproliferating, proliferating them with these types of memorials. So this is our first crack at trying to accomplish that. Brian and I are both available if you have any questions, and thank you.
Good, thank you. And this policy would give the city discretion, I understand, as to whether or not to, to put in a plaque or whatever is requested. We're not obligated, and we're not getting into some quagmire here where this person got something and somebody else didn't.
Correct. It identifies those facilities that, for example, benches that do not already have plaques as potentials, as well as it says that no new facilities, i.e. benches, would be installed so as to prevent a park full of benches and no grass.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Wyatt? Okay. All right.
One quick question.
Mr. Miller?
So this is, only applies to benches? Could it, I mean, it says they could provide the plaque, but-
That's correct.
Only to benches? So we can't memorialize on a rock or?
No, just a bench.
Okay, and they can't provide the bench?
No, they cannot.
All right, thank you, if that's all I need.
Yes, Mr. Tomlin? Sorry, Mr. Vazorek?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I have one quick question. I think I know the answer by reading the staff report, but I just want to confirm. It talks about a Dana Point resident may request a memorial plaque, so it's going to be at our discretion, and the discretion, the way the policy is written right now will lie with the city manager alone?
That's correct.
Okay. That was my question, thank you.
And then, do you know why this policy was discontinued?
I'll let Brian answer that question, because I think that might have been his first council meeting when he got to the city.
I think it was. You're familiar with Pines Park?
Yes.
Pines Park is proliferated with a bunch of benches. Memorial plaques are attached to every single one. A question came up as to, over time, as those benches start to deteriorate, is the resident responsible for purchasing another bench, or is the city responsible for purchasing that bench? How many benches are we going to allow at Pines Park or, or any park of that nature? And so we decided to suspend the policy at that time and kind of give us an opportunity to, to review it, and it's taken some time, but I think we've got a good idea and a good program going forward.
Okay, so what do we do if a bench becomes worn, there's a plaque on it?
Under, under the new policy, we would be responsible for the bench because it is a city bench, and currently, we're replacing those benches right now. Some of the benches at Pines Park, you might have noticed, they are going from a recycled material to concrete benches as we get to a point where we just, they're falling apart and we don't have the ability to replace them.
Okay.
So will we replace the plaque when we replace the bench?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I guess I was just scanning this policy to see where it says that the city will replace a bench. Do we have to replace?
Well, currently with this policy, it's an existing city bench.
Okay.
So there, there would not be any replacement involved. Over time, if it was vandalized or something, it's again, it's a city bench, and we would replace that bench and just take off the plaque and put it on to the new bench.
Okay. And the plaques are bronze, and does the-
The bronze memorial plaque, 10 inches by 4 inches, no larger than that.
And does the resident who requested it pay for the plaque?
Yes, ma'am.
And do we, do we have that in our policy? Do we need that in our policy?
I believe it's in the policy.
Is it in the-
Any, number six, any resident requesting a memorial plaque will be responsible for purchasing the plaque after the city has given its approval.
Okay, and do we have to say, and that they will be respons, well, they, I guess, unless the plaque has been vandalized, the plaque doesn't have to be replaced, right?
Exactly.
What if the plaque has to be replaced? Do we replace it?
I would reach out to the resident, but in all my years here, I've never had to replace a vandalized bronze plaque. Usually it's something, if it's graffiti or something, we can just clean it up.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Okay, so do I have a motion to move?
So moved.
Okay, any more discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yes, Mr. Vazorek?
As you all heard, I asked one question, and, you know, I, I guess I just wanted to discuss whether it was a good idea for having just one person be the determination authority as to whether the plaque fits into our criteria as to whether the individual has, and I, I can't remember the exact wording, but has contributed to our, our history or, let me see if I could find the language. What are-
Significant impact on the community?
Right, has a significant impact on the community, or, for example, an individual that has dedicated years of their life to helping improve Dana Point or descendant of Richard Henry Dana. You know, I, I don't know if I have a better answer for it, but it seems to me that, you know, I know the Historical Society is not a city subcommittee, but it seems like we should refer these requests to someone with that historical knowledge, whether the plaque should be approved. That's, that's my feeling. I don't know if we have another subcommittee, maybe the, the Arts and Culture Committee. I mean, I'm just, I'm looking for a discussion if, if people agree with this. If not, if they're okay with the city manager approving it, and not that I'm not, I'm just, I'm assuming that the first plaque will be requested by Mrs. Danny.
Gosh, I hope not.
Of course, it's a joke, so I'm just kidding. But, so I, I guess the only, I don't know if there's support, I'll see if there's any other discussion before I, I make a motion to amend that, but that, that would be the one thing I would throw out, that perhaps we should have maybe a committee of two or three people make the decision instead of the city manager.
Yeah, and that is a really good point. As I look at it, has a significant impact on the community. I know the person that contacted me, it's just his mother recently passed, and she loved Pine, Pines Park and wanted a plaque for the bench. I don't know that she would qualify as someone who had a significant impact on the committee, so, I mean, on the community. Is that, is that going to be our criteria?
For non-Dana Point- Excuse me, for non-Dana Point residents.
A Dana Point resident may request someone that has had, oh, resident, okay, request- Okay, so, so you're saying under, the number two, under special circumstances, a Dana Point resident may request a memorial bench for someone that has had a significant impact on the community? That's addressing non-Dana, oh, okay, I didn't get that out of that.
That's correct.
Okay, maybe we should make that clear.
So, for example, if the president of the Dana Point Historical Society was not a Dana Point resident but had served on the Historical Society for years and years and years, and, you know, had passed away and somebody wanted to recognize them, you could certainly make a finding that they've made a significant impact on the city through their contributions to the Dana Point Historical Society.
Okay, so, yeah, I didn't get that from reading that, so maybe we should say someone for a bench for someone other than a current Dana Point resident that has had a significant impact on the community. And so to your point, Mr. Vazorek?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yes, Madam, I guess, and, and to clarify, you know, the way I read it, it didn't seem to be, there was no discretion if they were simply a Dana Point resident. Is that our intent, that any Dana Point resident will automatically be given this plaque in the honor just by the fact that they live here? And if that's okay, if that's what we want to do. But it does go more to the, to the resident who are not residents of Dana Point.
Yes, yes, I-
How many benches do we have?
A lot more now.
Well, we can't add any.
They can't add a bench.
We have 145 that do not have plaques on them.
They're not, they're not going to last long if we let any Dana Point resident put, put a plaque on it.
Well, I mean, you know, I guess we could see how it goes, but-
Well, I, you know-
Is there, is there any criteria?
Well, back to Mr. Vazorek's point, maybe what you do is you have the city manager, along with the historical, president of the Historical Society, get together and they make the determination.
For a non-resident?
Yeah, for, even for a resident. I mean, I think, I think if you're going to memorialize, it should be, even if they're a resident, they could have been a resident for a year and somebody said, I want to put a plaque on a bench for them.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, is that what, is that what we want to do? I mean, that's what I'm saying, there won't be many benches left soon if we, if we pass this, without there having to be some criteria to get your name on it. Man, I'm buying my plaque tomorrow.
A memorial plaque?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Well, I don't know, man, it's some of the stuff I hear.
Something going on?
I was gonna say, are you, is, are you telling us something?
I just have to put it in tomorrow.
Well, the bench will be gone by then.
When you reserve the bench, you had to tie it.
Okay, so, well, I guess that's the question. Was the intention of this policy that any Dana Point red, current resident, if they request a memorial plaque, that it will be, it will be given?
I think the intent was that the priority would be given to Dana Point residents, and that, that there would be sort of almost a by right for Dana Point residents, and if you are not a Dana Point resident, there needs to be some criteria established about having made a significant impact to the community.
Does anybody, do you have, have a problem with that?
No, no, I don't, I don't have any problem with this overall idea of putting plaques on. I, I guess I just want to be clear, and maybe I should just try and make a motion and see if it gathers any support, but if we do have a finite number of plaques, I mean, maybe we should just make the policy apply to citizens, to residents, non-residents, they simply put in the application, have it reviewed by the city manager, and if willing, I suppose, the president of the Historical Society. I don't know what to do in the, if there's a tie vote under those circumstances, if we need a third person, but, and then just go forward with the policy from there. And then we have that criteria established and more than one person looking at it, and, because I, I do think, you know, when people go to the parks and they see plaques, they, they don't expect that people just, you know, maybe bought their way on if the plaque is, you know, simply to, if it is to honor someone who's made a significant positive impact on the community, that there was some kind of screening. So I'll try that motion, that we just apply that criteria to anyone who wants a plaque. Does that make sense? Did everyone understand my motion?
I got the motion, but I, you know, when I go to parks, I'll see something, you know, in loving memory of whoever. I, I don't really think these are people that necessarily have made a significant impact, they're just, somebody wants to remember them, so I, I was okay with that, but, so the motion is to amend the policy so that a city manager and the Historical Society needs to review- so that a city manager and the Historical Society needs to review the request? For someone who is a Dana Point resident or someone other than a Dana Point resident? That would be the procedure. Is there a second for that? That was the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, well, all right, so discussion-
So, I guess the discussion, no, we can still discuss this.
That's what I'm, I was about to discuss it.
I thought you said it, I thought discussion is-
No, 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 I was saying, I was about to discuss it. And I, I know this came about for me, and that's how I started speaking with Mr. Danny about this, is because somebody emailed and said their mother had just passed and they wanted to put a plaque on. So, I, I don't think it's anything that, that she has made some significant contribution and that we want this to go to the Historical Society and, you know, he just wants to walk by and there's mom on the bench. And I'm, I'm okay with that, so that would be my discussion.
I, I guess that's kind of what I was getting to, is, is do we want to remove the by right? If you're a Dana Point resident, by right, you can put a plaque on a bench. Or do we want it to make, since we do have a finite number, we only have a hundred and forty-five of them. I mean, seriously, I, you know, if we're gonna do this and you only have a small number, it's not like we're selling bricks in a, you know, here's five hundred bucks and you get your name on a brick in one of our parks. I mean, this is different, I mean, you have a lot of bricks. But, you know, I don't know, I guess, I, I kind of like the idea of them having some type of impact on the community, but, I don't know, I mean, the by right thing, I guess I could live with that too.
Is this, actually, the person is, is deceased? So is it the deceased person who was a Dana Point resident, not the person requesting it?
In both cases, we want the person requesting to be a Dana Point resident.
But the person, the person for whom the plaque is put on there, do we want that person to have been a Dana Point resident?
The way the policy is currently proposed is that if they're a Dana Point resident-
Oh, and for a Dana Point-
And it's requested from a Dana Point resident, we'll then review it to see if it can be accommodated based on the number of available benches. If the Dana Point resident requests one for a non-Dana Point resident, then that's where we'll apply the criteria in terms of having a significant impact. And if the council so decides, also have the president of the Historical Society join the city manager in that review of that request.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be a memorial plaque, it could be for a live person.
Correct. It, it is memorial.
Okay, that answered my question, thank you.
What's that? It's for a, so are we clarifying?
His question was whether, whether or not it was a memorial.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and the answer is yes.
Memorial bench, yeah, okay. All right, so-
Got it.
Mr. Wyatt?
So we're sure we're not overthinking this, I guess, I, I think the reason why it doesn't just all disappear is they generally get put on a bench to add some meaning to the person, right? Because they went down there and sat often with their mother when, you know, and so that was it. And so every time they go by, they remember that was the place that they, that somebody really enjoyed and they went with it. So they are not going to put one at the far edge of town somewhere on a bench. I mean, it usually ends up, if, if they can put it on something that has real meaning. So I don't think it usually gets, just, hey, there's a hundred and forty-five benches, this, go out. So I, I'm not sure we're not overthinking it, but I guess either way is, yeah.
Okay, but either way, the motion on the table at this point is to amend this policy to have it not just the city manager, but given also to the Historical Society and they will decide whether this person is appropriate. So that's what we have on and seconded.
I think the amendment, though, is to have that selection criteria applied to residents and non-residents. Is that correct, Mr. Vizork?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so the person who just sat at a bench with mom, it would have to go to, under this, it would have to go to the Historical Society and the city manager to determine whether it was appropriate. So that's our motion on the table, it's been seconded. Any more discussion? Okay. Okay, so that passed, three to two. So the policy will be amended from what we see here and it will say that all requests of this, well, I guess now it shouldn't just say all requests of this nature, it should say all requests must be approved by the city manager or designee and the Historical Society.
Correct.
Okay. We haven't spoken to them about this. That'll teach them not to show up. Okay, so of this nature will come out and it'll just say all requests. Okay. Next item. Twenty-five, resolution for homeless task force, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The homeless task force met earlier this month. I should know that.
End of July.
End of July. And at their meeting, discussed setting more regular meetings and establishing a work plan. And as a part of that, we discussed more formally establishing a charter for the task force. And this is our first cut at that document. Because the task force is a city council-appointed body, we wanted to share the draft with the council for any of your comments prior to having the task force itself weigh in on it. We would then bring it back to your council for adoption at the September meeting. The task force next meeting is for August twenty-ninth, I believe, last, oh, thirtieth, sorry, last, last week of the month. And so Mayor Protam Wyatt serves on that task force on behalf of the city council and would like to recognize him if he'd like to add any comments.
Yes, so, the, the July twenty-sixth meeting was my first meeting on the, on the task force as a city council representative. And in fact, it was the first meeting held since October of twenty-sixteen. So I hadn't, hadn't really been able to get everything lined up to, to get it together and have a meeting till then. And it was very well attended. I mean, we had a number of residents there, the staff, and a number of organizations that help provide services and, you know, and look to work with the homeless. And we, I mean, I guess I, I would say we had a lively discussion on ideas and things that we might do and, and sort of updating us on the count of, Mercy House's count of the, of the named homeless, if you will, their list of the homeless that essentially, as they put it, are Dana Point homeless, meaning that they typically spend their nights here. But I felt that in the meeting that we, it was, there was, the meeting now, I think it was established in twenty-fourteen, the task force was established, so it's, it's three years old now. And, and I don't want to say it hasn't accomplished anything, you know, some movement has been made, some things have been done. And, and some, and we've, we've, you know, contracted with some organizations to help us work with the homeless. But the problem is, is, is a significant problem. It's not, it's not going to be dealt with by, you know, discussing it and, and doing some work. It actually is going to need some real attention, some real effort from staff that's directed. And I felt that, that the task force wasn't really, didn't really feel empowered to do that. And, and the makeup of the task force was incorrect to do that because the task force members, many of them were service providers who had a conflict of interest if you went out to look for contracting with them to provide services. So in coming back, I felt we needed to more clearly charter it. And, and what I really wanted to develop was a plan, a mission, you know, and this, this resolution says to, you know, to, I forget the exact words, but basically, or, or, well, actually, let me just look at the exact wording used. But essentially, it says that we want to, you know, eliminate homelessness. And I think we need to actually look to do that, right? I mean, I think it's important that we set out to say, you know, we're going to look to find a way to eliminate homelessness. So I think it was, yeah, reducing or eliminating, I knew there was a qualifying word in one. I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, we may not get there in terms of it, but I think our intent and what we would put together a plan really should be to eliminate homelessness in our, in the area. It's a, you know, there's a whole set of issues to be dealt with in doing that. It's much more regional in nature, there's a lot of entities involved, we need to work with other groups. So out of, at the end of that meeting, ended with sort of directing the city staff to help us create a task force and work through what that would look like that could go and take this work on and look at how to get a, really a plan back to council that we could look to approve and move forward. So the step, for step one is to organize a task force that, you know, that's, we really feel has the right mix of people and members to go out and, and propose a solution that's realistic to, you know, us to deal with and then come back. And then as the task force gets ramped up and a work plan created, then the task force can wind up. It's done its job by creating a, a plan to, for the city to deal with homelessness. So I think the, as we work through this, it, it's a little, you know, how, how all of those pieces are going to work is a little bit much to sort of get around. But as I worked through what the staff had provided, I think they did an excellent job of making a proposal back that we can now go back to the community with and the people involved. And, and we may end up, you know, modifying the mix of members a little bit and some other things. But I think ultimately, we have a good starting point to form a, a task force that can really be effective in dealing it. We've broadened it out to include other organizations that really participate in both the benefit and, you know, and the homeless in our area in terms of the county and, and the state in terms of the state beaches and, and other, and the South Coast Water District and because all of these are part of where the problem exists. And done well, I think we will begin to, if we charter it well, have meetings that also meet with our neighboring communities because, so we can do regional discussions of how we work together to deal with this on a more regional basis. But anyway, I think we need to have a task force who says, "We're gonna go out and come up with a plan and we're gonna come back and, you know, and ask the city council to allow us to start to proceed on this plan." And anyway, that's what this is about, so I've gone over it with staff. I feel like we have a good starting point. And I really, I'm really excited that we're willing to put in the effort to try to do something concrete to deal with the problem.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work on this. And thank you for everybody who worked on this to get this a regular meeting because I think this issue is so critical, just ad hoc just wasn't going to be sufficient. So thank everyone who's worked on that. Any other comments? Mr. Miller?
Make one comment, I like it, let's move forward with it, and I'll move the item.
Any other discussion before we get a second? Second?
Second.
Thank you, okay. So, okay, so we're receiving and providing input on the draft for the resolution for the homeless task force and directing staff to solicit input on the draft resolution from the existing homeless task force at its meeting scheduled for August thirtieth. And directing staff to bring the resolution back to the city council for approval at the September nineteenth, twenty-seventeen meeting. No discussion, so let's vote. Motion carries five-zero. Okay, do we, we have any other public comments that were continued? No, Madam Mayor. Any other staff reports, Mr. City Manager?
Other than to say thank you to the staff for the hard work on the variety of items that were before you tonight, as well as a reminder again about Sunday's concert in the park that our Arts and Culture Commission has worked so hard on, that's part of their work plan for the year. And we're proud of the work they're doing. And then we'll also be getting information to you, there's a special event on August twenty-fifth at Dana Hills High School where they're gonna cut the ribbon for the Culinary Arts Lab that's been established there, that's a partnership between the city, the school district, and all of our hospitality providers in town to help train young people on serving in the hospitality industry. And so it's a, it's a great project and we hope all the city council can be there to help celebrate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, council reports? Mr. Miller? Okay. Anybody have any ad fill?
That's what I'm saying, that's why I need the memorial plaque, this is why I need a reason or something.
Mr. Wyatt?
I've-
I'm not laughing at your ad fill.
I've turned in my list of reports to the city clerk. I would like to not dwell more on the homeless task force meeting because we just discussed it some, but I, I thought it was a worthwhile meeting to see the amount of interest and, and the fair amount of determination to do something even though we didn't quite have a direction. I, I was encouraged by the desire and I've, I had a meeting with the ACCOC CEO Heather Stratman subsequent to that. I attended also, I guess, on my list, a couple of other meetings to deal with homelessness. And one of them, you know, was a, as a presentation again of the cost of homelessness in the county and, and, you know, and what it costs. And so, you know, some, some part of it looks like it's, it's a no-brainer. It costs, you know, by their definition, typically about a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year to leave somebody live on the street and about fifty thousand dollars to house them and provide them the services they need for the chronic homeless. So you could look at that in one view and say, well, it's no, it's a no-brainer, house them and save you fifty thousand dollars. Unfortunately, the fifty thousand dollar saving isn't that easy to recover because it's, you know, it's ambulance expense and medical expense and police expense that's sort of scattered around. So I had a subsequent meeting looking for, you know, the, the benefit pay model. It says if, if the hospitals are really paying this amount of money and the various companies to do it, how do we work with them to set up a program where we contract with them to help recover some of the costs to pay for this? So I think there's opportunities that came out of those meetings to create, and since the ACCOC has an ongoing homeless task force and they are the ones who helped sponsor this, I thought they might be at the point of bringing these organizations who it's really, are ending up bearing the, the costs to the table to look how they can both contribute and still save money.
and still save money. So, we may, you know, and looking for ways to fund this. I think, hopefully, that will turn into a more useful work that we can do to deal with this. So, there's a number, I think I attended five meetings that dealt with the homelessness in the last month, and every time I learned a little bit more, so maybe we will be able to accomplish something.
Yes, we hope so. You're going to be our expert on this. Mr. Tomlinson?
I have no meetings to report, thank you.
Mr. Vizork?
Thank you, Madam, I have nothing to report.
And I will turn in my list after some cajoling by our city clerk. But I'm very happy to say I don't have to read those minutes now. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, excellent first one. Thank you, Mr. Senicori, also, excellent, and Sheriff Chilton, thank you very much, and all the staff, appreciate it. Okay, so, we didn't finish our closed session, so I'm going to adjourn the open session. We're going to return to a closed session. And I am adjourning the meeting tonight in memory of Colleen Schwann, who passed away on July 25th at the age of 88. Colleen served on the Dana Point Cultural Commission in the early 1990s, and Colleen was a professional soloist, and much of what she did in life centered around music. Colleen was an organizer of the Dana Point Lawn Chair and Picnic Society, which was a precursor to our concerts in the park. So, in memory of her, I am adjourning this open session to return to a closed session. And just a note that our next regular meeting will not be at the city council chambers, but instead, on September 19, 2017, at 5:00, it will be at the Dana Point Community Center located at 34052 Del Abisbo in Dana Point. Thank you.